Yes, of course. Okay, so rather than go through the staff reports, I figured it would be helpful to have some visuals to break this down a little bit. So if you wouldn't mind going to the next slide. So first, some background on this project and the comprehensive plan as a whole. The comprehensive plan helps guide physical development and investment in the city. It establishes overarching, long-range plans and visions, generally covering 20 to 25 years, which you can definitely see in this chapter, which was last updated in 2005. You can see in the chart to the right of on that slide, the chapters that, the 10 chapters that make up the city's comprehensive plan, as well as any other amendments or maps that are adopted into it, as well as the years. So 2005 has a few different chapters that are still standing, this being one of them. So the proposed update to the chapter for just a very brief outline was, oh, sorry, the page before still, was developed using the most recent demographic projections, which were part of the 2020, or 2024 demographics update, industry-specific best practices, and the existing infrastructure of multiple city agencies and facilities. This chapter hopes will inform strategic planning for the next two decades and beyond. Sorry, next slide. So to quickly go over the process to date, city staff began in March of last year with a industry scan, area view of state code requirements, and analysis of progress made toward the goals of the 2005 chapter. And then throughout the course of this year has, have conducted interviews with over 30 subject matter expert, experts, sorry. This chapter was chosen after a review of the status of the comprehensive plan as a whole and was found to have a few different points that were out of date with state code standards, as well as hitting the 20-year mark this year. And so it's important to have an accurate view and a forward-looking plan. So from that, the information, city staff developed a draft chapter and received feedback and review from the internal stakeholders. Those stakeholders represented various city agencies, the Falls Church Public School, public schools, and different partner organizations. All right, next slide. So this again touches on the process to date, showing a bit more of the months that these steps occurred. I want to specifically call out that we did have a kickoff with Planning Commission, Public Utilities in July, June and July of last year. And then we had a kickoff with City Council in early August of last year. For those kickoffs, we presented the general scope we were looking at, as well as the background research we had done in the months prior, and included a comments matrix for the PUC and Planning Commission. And in the staff report for this, tonight's meeting, we have a comments matrix from the comments from the kickoff meeting with council. To the next slide. So the purpose of this plan is to be used as a guide for regular investments, specifically budgeting and prioritization of needs. So below, you can see a list of four items that are often impacted or informed by this plan, or the plan overall. So that's the strategic plan, the CIP, the budgeting process, as well as city policies and staffing arrangements. It's also used as a reference for third-party utility providers and private development applications when they're considering community needs and investments. So to go to the next slide, we quickly touch on the chapter's organization, which has changed a bit since you saw the scope last year. The primary guiding, or the way we've chosen to frame this is having four overarching sections, which are government services and facilities, public safety, city utility services, and third-party utility services. And you can see in that page grab from the chapter what goes under all those, as well as helpful maps and tables to give additional information. In each of those sections, so for example, City Hall, there will be an overview of the existing facilities, an evaluation of their respective needs, and preliminary recommendations to address the noted challenges. To the next slide. So to, for each of our chapters, the city has had a vision statement. We have a vision statement overall for the comprehensive plan, and then specific ones to each chapter. So this is the proposed vision statement that has remained pretty much the same since you saw it in August of last year. So I'll just do a quick read, because it is important to know where we're hoping to go. Civic infrastructure serves as building blocks for any healthy and thriving community. The city must therefore maintain and evolve its facilities, education system, public safety delivery, and government operations to sustain a high quality of life today and prepare for the conditions of tomorrow, including expected population and employment growth, changing demographic profiles, and a changing climate. City facility design and service delivery should continue to emphasize efficiency, further integrate technology, and continual improvements, and serve as a source of community pride. Next slide. So coming out of that statement, as well as the discussion at the council kickoff last year, we came up with the following guiding principles that were used to both evaluate each sec, each subject in each section, as well as evaluate what are strategies and actions that could benefit each section. So I won't read all of them, but I'll just read the general focuses, which are that, community-focused, universal design, safety and security, green buildings and infrastructure, efficient delivery of surfaces, quality work environment, tech-forward, and long-term planning. Next slide. Here we have a few maps that are in the draft chapter right now. These are additions. The previous version of the chapter did not have any maps identifying city facilities. This one in particular shows both city general government facilities, as well as the schools. Go to the next slide. Here you see two more in detailed maps, targeting two of our campuses, our civic campuses, one being the City Hall, Community Center, and Cherry Hill Park area, and the other being the Property Yard. These call out specific functions, as well as surrounding zoning and properties to give a better idea of what the area is to the reader. Next slide, please. So coming out of this chapter, we came up with the four priority facility needs. The roadmap for government facilities will be explained more on the next page, as well as the overarching objectives. But I want to highlight that one priority that was evident in our discussions and in looking at best practices is the need to develop a sanitary sewer master plan and stormwater sewer master plan. Another key strategy we want to continue doing is assessing service costs for new major developments. So that is performing impact studies on these proposed developments to assess whether growth is paying for growth. All right. So this is a lot of words, but this is kind of the core thesis that was found in the plan. And it's a general roadmap for government facilities. So throughout our interviews and the sections, there was need identified to expand city facilities or city workforces, workforce spaces. So this kind of four-part plan works to address that. So the first action is to lease additional office space in the short term. And when doing that, we should prioritize vacating deficient office spaces, reuniting separated departments, and grouping similar uses when reorganizing the workspaces. The next step should be to conduct a study projecting future growth of city government and city schools' workforces. This will give us a better idea of what the needs will be in the next 10 to 20 years. The third step is to conduct a citywide government functional needs inventory, which identifies deficiencies in both the amount and quality of available workspaces and facilities. So this inventory can be compiled using the Facilities Conditions Assessment, which is completed every 10 years, last completed in 2021. This chapter, after it is adopted, and additional research and discussions with staff. The focus should be primarily on public safety, public works, and the hypothermia shelter when addressing these needs. The fourth part of this roadmap is to use the products of Action 2.1B and 2.1C, so the Employment Projection Study and the Functional Needs Inventory, to develop a public facilities plan, which proposes permanent solutions to the city's spatial needs. And this plan should analyze costs, location, and sequencing options to inform detailed recommendations. If we could go to the next slide. So as this road, overall roadmap is being moved forward, we suggest also advancing on the following objectives: to develop a facilities maintenance manual, to use the Facility Conditions Assessment, which is done every 10 years, as a guide for proactive maintenance and improvements; to conduct regular energy audits and security audits of all civil facilities; to continue investments in green building practices at city facilities; to continue to cyclically update plans, policies, and agreements as needed, partnering with organizations in the community when necessary; remaining innovative and exploring technologies that can enhance public services; and to continue analyzing service costs associated with major development proposals. Next slide, please. So to step out of the content of the plan and back into the process, we have outlined four major stakeholder groups that we plan to continue to engage with. The first being subject matter experts. They have been the one that we have been engaging with for the past at least year, perhaps nine months. And they have been involved through interviews, resource sharing, as well as numerous internal reviews of the drafted chapter. The second major stakeholder is city boards and commissions. So we have identified three core guiding groups, which we had our original kickoffs with and will continue to seek guidance from throughout this process, which is the City Council, the Planning Commission, and the Public Utilities Commission. We currently are also planned to present the draft and seek feedback from the ESC, HVAC, and the school board, as they are all involved in specific subjects covered in this plan. The third stakeholder group is the broader community. So to engage with them, we plan on maintaining the product, project webpage, which is already set up. And then following in the footsteps of previous plans and chapters, we are planning on doing a pop-up at the Falls Church Farmers Market, as well as an additional pop-up at the Community Center. And most of this engagement will most likely be more informative than seeking specific advice, because so much of this chapter is very technical. Although we welcome and look forward to hearing thoughts of the community and everyone else. The final group is city and school employees. As this chapter specifically discusses spaces used daily by city and school employees, we hope to present at an employee town hall, as well as sharing the webpage and contact information, much like we are doing with the public. Next slide, please. So to kind of put the stakeholder engagement on to, into dates, we are entering Phase Two of the, our projected schedule, which starts with tonight, presenting the full draft to City Council. From there, we will go to having the initiating resolution and the referral to boards and commissions. And with, in the following weeks, we will have a joint meeting with Planning Commission and Public Utilities Commission. From there, we're looking at doing most of our community engagement between October and November, hoping to hit the fall farmers markets, which are very popular. And then we are looking to take all of this, the comments and suggestions, and revise the draft chapter in November and December of this year. Next page. So to enter the final phase, Phase Three, which will be final consideration, we are aiming for a February or March adoption ideally, hoping to go back to those three core advisory groups, Planning Commission, PUC, and City Councils, to showcase the revised chapter and get feedback and get it into ideally final form. All right, with that, thank you again for having me, and I'll open it up to questions.
Great. Thank you, Zoe. Thank you for the update, since I guess we last kicked it off probably over a year ago now. So I'm sure we have questions and comments. Who wants to go first? Well, given it's a media, I guess, we have the vision, and then we have multiple sections. I had read nearly 60 pages of this, and so I don't know whether we want to go based on the deck or based on the presentation. What do you all think?
Well, I read through, I didn't.
At the deck, yeah. If we can pull up maybe the comp plan chapter draft, and then we can go through that. Should we start with the vision?
I would support Laura's idea of maybe, I don't know if we want to do global comments and then do like the chap, section, section by section, in terms of like schools and City Hall and Property Yard.
Okay, so the first meaty one, I guess, is the vision. Do people have input?
I'll jump in. I liked the vision. I liked that it was broad, the updated, the proposed draft of the new vision. I liked that it was broader. My only comment would be that first line where it says civic infrastructure serves. I would, I just think we should add civic infrastructure and services serve. Because I think a lot of times people look at infrastructure as sewer capacity and that sort of thing. But it's also city services. So that would be all my thing is just maybe make it civic infrastructure and services serve as building blocks.
Okay. Other comments on the vision? So I really like the way this has evolved. I like that it talks about continuous improvement, high quality of life, and it's very future-looking and preparing kind of forward-looking needs. My only suggestion is because of the guiding principle later on that was added about universal design, it feels like accessibility should be inserted in there. So city facility design and service delivery should continue to emphasize efficiency and accessibility would be my wordsmithing. I feel like that's something that we've talked about a lot across all facilities. It'd be nice to have that aspiration in there. Okay.
Just one question. Does a vision statement adequately include cultural and historical support for those? By the way, I did have oral surgery recently, and the follow-up is included radiation. So if I sound a little offbeat tonight, hopefully my thinking is offbeat, but I just wanted to apologize in advance. But do we capture, even as we look forward, we need to preserve our past and present our past? Is that adequately covered in the vision statement?
I think that we discuss it in different parts of the chapter, but it's definitely worth looking at for inclusion in the vision statement, as the city does have a rich history.
I mean, something like celebrate or inform about our past, because the city has critical historic resources. Library, the Virginia Room, the, you know, so I like the efficiency. I like the technology. I like the forward part. But I'm not sure we've addressed adequately cultural while informing, while informing about our past or something like that.
Recognition of, recognition of cultural and historical.
Cultural and historical, yeah.
You could maybe, again, sorry to wordsmith, but maybe at the end, that one long sentence where it ends, "changing demographic profiles in a changing climate," while recognizing our rich his, while also recognizing our rich history and culture, or something like that.
Since the, I don't know, help wordsmith, since the last sentence is getting like totally unwieldy, can we just break it into like service delivery should continue to emphasize efficiency, further integrate technology and continual improvements, and serve as a source of community pride? And then maybe have another sentence that's like, "city facility should maintain community appearance standards, celebrate whatever is cultural and historical places, and ensure accessibility for all across, like to the greatest extent possible, right? So we don't just like put everything there and catch the like service delivery piece of it, and then the sort of city facilities being responsive to users." Thanks.
So basically, that is a sentence that encompasses the three things we just talked about.
That can be, yeah, considered. These vision statements can often get very wordy. So I think looking at readability is important.
Anything else on vision? Well, that's pretty good, because I got deja vu from when we did the 2040 vision statement. I think that was.
That's why I'm not saying anything. I've been known to say too much on those things, so I think it's really good.
Great. Okay, let's move on.
Next subject.
Let's move on to the next chapter.
Can I, can I do something on guiding principles? Where you mentioned green infrastructure and the city's sustainability goals. Can you actually mention the Government Energy Action Plan by name?
Yes, definitely.
Okay. I think that's important to actually call out that other report that's already been done.
Yes, definitely.
Thanks.
Recognize the work that's been done already.
Anything else on the guiding principles? Yeah, could we scroll to that on the page, so we're looking at the right thing?
It should be page three.
The next big section of City Hall? Is that right?
Is there a way to get a different picture of a school facility there? It's a very cute picture, but.
Yes, definitely. We are still very much open to adding pictures and looking at pictures. And would appreciate any pictures being passed along.
I can definitely help you with that. And then my other comment is just, oh, Mount Daniel Elementary School, it was not bought from Fairfax County. We built that in 1952.
Oh, that's good to know. We were looking for the deeds.
I can give you all the history. I won't do it here, but anytime you need school history. But we, that was one of the first things, one of the first facilities the city built, the high school and the Mount Daniel opened together in 1952.
And look, so Mary Beth is referring to page, the chart on page seven, for those of you who are trying to keep up. I would just say, I was curious why it, maybe this is a question for you, but it says MEH had a major renovation in 2024. I'm not sure that the administrators would agree there was a major renovation there in 2024. I mean, I know they did a big HVAC system and some flooring, but. Mary Beth, would you agree with me on that?
Yeah, the connection to the high school, I think, was a big renovation.
Yeah, maybe.
So that was like 2021 when this.
Yeah.
But, yeah, there was.
The bulk of the school has not been renovated.
Right, the big thing was the HVAC. And the floor, yeah, I mean, the floors, so. It doesn't meet.
I, yeah, I just don't want, yeah, whatever. I just don't want people to think there was a big reno, because, yeah, the buildings were connected in HVAC, but some of the facility is aging. But that's, we can move on.
Oh, since we're on that chart, sorry, on page six, when we're talking about years of major renovations, should the Community Center year be updated, given the HVAC project, or no?
I think that one falls in the same point Ms. Downs was making.
Yeah.
Like, the rest of the building, you know, still, and I think the chapter alludes to some of the work that we're going to eventually need to do. So, good discussion. We can clean up the dates and stuff to be consistent.
Well, I wonder if we had another line that is like, partial renovation instead of major renovation or upgrade, a bit of an upgrade.
Sorry, did we skip the whole government space thing now, or are we going back now to that?
We're not to it yet.
Yeah, I think. Because I thought we were skipping that school chart thing.
Yeah, we're just going at that. I think it gets into the meat on page 12, I think.
I had page 12 is.
Yeah.
Government space. Okay.
Onto the schools. Are we talking about student enrollment estimates for the future? And we reference the Stephen Fuller Group. They provided several rather different estimates. And so it might be helpful to refer and link people to that study so that they can see the range of estimates. Because that shouldn't be lost. That was a very interesting discussion. He hoped it would be here, but he thinks it might be there, so, yeah.
I think we can, and we, I think a lot of that was captured in the demographics chapter to the comp plan, but we can just kind of make sure that those links stay live so that that information remains accessible.
Until it's, you know, replaced by another similar briefing.
I think the principle that Dave's talking about, that I think is pretty special and great about Falls Church, is integrating our facility planning with actual data and projections, and doing it on a regular basis. I think that's actually, hopefully, everyone should aspire to, right? Like, look at where your population's growing, plan your facility needs, your school needs, based on that. And being in that habit, I think, maybe as a principle or as a process that we should say, we should do this all the time, whether it's Stephen Fuller, we get our, you know, Walden Cooper, or whatever. Because I think we've used demographic projections of some kind for at least the past 10 years.
Yeah, I think the difference is Fuller took, takes into account the new mixed-use developments, which the old one, I can't, I'm blanking on what we used to use, but didn't. So I think this Fuller is more accurate. Yeah.
TBD whether it's more accurate. We'll see.
I like your, sorry, I'll just, I like the, following comment Mayor Hardy said, your thought of looking, planning ahead for the staff needs and staff locations and all that as part of this. So as we get into plan for government space, I think that is a very thoughtful way to talk about that. That wouldn't happen, though, till after this is done, correct? So we'd finish this, and then you'd go into your action items.
In part, I think that this chapter. In part, I think that this chapter and the work that's been done in the interviews can serve as a basis for the needs assessment with the addition of the facilities, conditions assessment and further conversations. So generally, I think the actions will come after, but this chapter will hopefully be able to serve as a starting block to that discussion.
That's actually, I want to dovetail on that because my comment on this is on page 12, right? It felt like action 2.1B should actually come before 2.1A. 2.1A espouses that we should go out and make a bunch of short-term leases, whereas 2.1B says, well, we should evaluate and figure what our future needs are. And it feels like we should start with, what are our needs by department, how much we're going to grow, where are they currently spaced? Can they be reconfigured in the space and we need to move them? And then we might need to pursue short-term leases or buy spaces or whatever. So it just felt like the order was reversed for me. I'm curious what the rest of council thinks.
Yeah, I agree. I will say, I was, you know, I think this is really, this was very enlightening to me. I know through our GovOps committees, I sort of knew that we were, because one of the things I had brought up recently was, I know some staff still work virtually. And so we had talked to Wyatt and one of our GovOps about that. And, you know, he, sorry, I don't mean to speak for you, Wyatt, but just that, you know, there's, there's a crunch with office space. And so reading this really, I think, brought it home to me. Did a really nice job capturing some of the challenges we have with office space. I think you're right, Mayor, we need to study it first. But, you know, as we, if the city grows and we do need to bring on more staff, we're already a little bit tight. So we need to really look at that. And, you know, I know there's buildings around here that could be leased and looked at. But, yeah, I think that makes sense, Mayor, is to go first with the study.
So I would offer, as we've kind of laid this out, right, I think we have a pretty good understanding of kind of what our needs are today, right? And those, those needs kind of center on, like, as you've alluded to, we're kind of tight on spaces as it is, right? We've been fortunate to kind of added a number of staff members here over the last six months. As kind of, you know, got folks here today as, as examples of that. We started, I think, the end of last year with 15 vacancies in the Department of Public Works. We're down to three as an example. So, so I think the team, Tara and Herb and others have made some really good progress just in that department as an example, filling spaces. And so finding a place for everybody to sit has been a challenge, right? And, and thinking through, part of the point of coming into the office is to engage and collaborate with your coworkers. And so that's tough when there's not enough space for all of them to come in on the same day, or I've got people in three different buildings and things like that. And so, so what we've kind of laid out is, you know, I think, and we would need to come back with a more in-depth discussion with you all to kind of make the case for it, but we think that there's a need to kind of do something more in the short term. As we talk about the steps that have been kind of laid out in here, that Zoe kind of set up about kind of projecting future workforce growth, coupling that with kind of a functional needs assessment. So this is something that comes out in the police, public safety part of the chapter. Like compiling all of that and kind of thinking through how all the puzzle pieces fit together is, you know, or is kind of that probably medium term kind of things that we need to do that influences the investment we would make at the property yard, what other things, you know, reconfiguring space and otherwise here in the city that we would need to do. As we've kind of thought through the timeline on, on what something like that might look like, it might be eight or 10 years before something like that might get done. And so, so that, I think there are things that need to be addressed, you know, to provide the kind of functional and collaborative space that we need for our workforce more immediately than in the next eight or 10 years. And so, so I think as we kind of put that together and make that case to you all, I think we can kind of lay that out. I think there's a, there's a couple steps in that process. And that's why we've laid it out the way we have here.
Just so that I understand, for that process, would that need to be something that's, let's say, part of the council work plan in the coming years such that this actually gets done? Or is this something that would likely happen, no matter what, that staff is going to work on? And it doesn't necessarily need to be a council priority?
I think we've identified it as a need, and so we're going to work on it. You know, I think would be, you know, I guess council could direct us not to, but I think we've, we've identified this as a need to support the workforce. And so I think it's something that we're kind of actively working through already.
But in budget implications is probably where we would come in.
Absolutely.
I'm sorry, I'm going a little off here, but one of the things I was thinking, because there is this theme of space, right? When we were reading about, when I was reading about also the public safety, sheriff's office, police department, fire, marshal, all these things. And one quick question I had was, so the police department is located in this building. Does it have to be located in this building because of the court?
No, it does not have to be.
Sheriff have to have their main functions here?
You know, I think the sheriff doesn't have to be in this building. Also, it is, because court is here, that proximity has important operational aspects. I have been a long advocate for having public safety in this building. I think it is good to have the whole, that integration. But there are challenges to it. And, and our police department has to live with those challenges every day.
All right. Okay, so this is, I'm just going to throw this out there. But one of the things that, you know, when I'm walking around, people constantly are like, where's the police department? Because it's on this, it's not very visible. It's on the side with the public safety, you know, thing. And as I was reading through this, I was thinking, well, could you, could we, if we could find the money at some point, you know, there's a couple buildings right around here, right, literally across the street and behind us that are for lease or for sale, you know, could you house all the public safety stuff, move it out and, and have, you know, police and sheriff and fire marshal and all that in their own? And then that would free up space in this building for everything else.
So the.
I know this is like, I know.
No, no, no.
I just.
So the roadmap that Zoe's laid out, right, is, is do something in the, do something in the short term with your all's buy-in and support to kind of give us some breathing room and address some deficiencies that we have in the short term. Project out our workforce needs for the next 10 to 20, 20 years, I think is kind of hard, but at least for the next 10 years. Conduct, you know, do a functional needs assessment of kind of the deficiencies that we've got to ideally meeting kind of all of our department's missions. And then there's a ton of possibilities about how you could go about solving that. And so the piece we've talked about, about where we would most likely want to bring in some help, and this would probably show up in the CIP for you all to consider next year, would be, I think, Zoe, would we call it a facilities, like, plan? It wasn't very, it wasn't a very creative name, but, but it's basically to take those inputs and kind of look at all of the different possibilities about how to put the jigsaw puzzle together in the most cost-effective and mission-effective way to support the city's needs for the next 20 years. And it's complicated. There's a lot of different possibilities. We've talked a lot, I think, in the last year about fixing some of the public works needs up at the property yard. How do we do that while we're addressing the public safety needs and some of the other needs in the city? I think that's what the roadmap that we've kind of laid out is intended to help us solve.
That's great. Thank you. Thank you for indulging me.
And the option you, you mentioned is definitely one of those ones, you know, I mean, it's some combination of three things. You're going to build something new, you're going to acquire, renovate, expand something, or you're going to lease something, right? And so, so those are all things that we would work through as part of the roadmap that the team has kind of laid out.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
I don't think it's a crazy idea because actually one of the comments I had later on was actually better wayfinding signage for police. Because after hours, at least usually once a month, I do get people wandering, like, when we leave city meetings, people looking actually for the police at night. So I don't think they know the public safety entrance is there. And so my idea was like, we just need better wayfinding signage. But at some point, like, thinking about the broader plan of where the police should be located, that could solve multiple things. But in the interim, wayfinding signage might be helpful because I have had a number of people come into City Hall through the public entrance at night, looking and trying to navigate how to get down to the police because they don't know the public safety entrance is outside. So, but back to the broader public space, I guess, for City Hall. I guess I look forward to making case, I think I'm still in place where, to me, I would like to know where the growth plans are by department for the next several years before we make any short-term commitments, mostly because I think most office leases are minimum five years. And so if we're committing essentially a five-year lease while we work in the broader plan, we should just be explicit about that. But also, when we embarked on renovating City Hall and reopening in 2020, I guess three of us were around when we went through those discussions. We committed that this building would last us the length of the debt. And so I'd like to make sure we are creative about that and hold ourselves to that fiscal responsibility, too.
Mayor, I couldn't agree with you more. And I think it's critical, another comment you made earlier where you said there's a process for looking at expansion, that needs to be writ large in all of this. And I want to make sure that's captured. Also, where we talk about services, some analysis of what development has done to increase the services needs. And that's in a couple of the chapters already.
Can I jump in on, sorry, go ahead.
But more importantly, just two general comments. First of all, I, I really need clarity on what it is, where the action we're taking on the eighth, so the public's aware of that. What exact action are we taking? It may be confusing. Are you approving the comp plan? Are you doing it? What are you doing it? So that needs to be clear. The second thing is, in your public, in your, your public rollout, we've got a highly educated and sophisticated community. And I think there was some comment in the presentation about, well, we're not asking them, we're not asking them what, we're asking them how. And I don't think that's a good approach to the citizens. And I hope for more town halls as opposed to just pop-ups. There's no record from pop-ups. There's no real opportunity to, to state a position. And our citizens like to do that. So I need to, hopefully we can build that into the rollout. Okay, I'm done with that element of it. Thanks.
I was just going to jump in to say I agreed, right, with kind of just wanting to understand the overall plan. And I think in the slides, like, we do a good job with the different facilities and when they were upgraded, or with the schools, and like, what is the school growth or what is the school capacity? And even though it's sort of in the text of the document, I think a chart of like, what are the city facilities, like, what is City Hall? What is your current staffing of how many people are in the building? What is your, like, occupancy capacity for how many people could actually be in here? Like, when you look at the school slide and it says, you know, Mount Daniel has space for whatever it is, like.
660.
668 or something like that. And it's like, oh, it looks like 180 more kids can fit in that building. Like, we heard last year that 180 kids don't fit in that building at the same classroom size unless you no longer have an art room and a music room and a Spanish room and a whatever other room. And so I think, like, there needs to be that sort of same exercise for the city buildings in terms of like, what is, like, what is actual capacity? And what do you give up in order to sit more people in the building? Or, you know, how do you reconfigure a space? Or I understand, you know, the sort of restrictions of having more hybrid, you know, meetings or virtual meetings, and it means you don't have to be in the same room. And if you have open workspaces, it can be distracting. But, you know, like, what does it look like in a hoteling system? What does it look like when you have the equivalent of sort of bays that people can go to when they're having meetings as opposed to doing it from their workstation, right? Before we're at, what does it look like to be another $300,000 investment in space when we just went through an exercise of trying to determine how to bring the budget down by, you know, a few hundred thousand dollars going into a period where we don't expect as much growth? And there's like, frankly, a fair amount of uncertainty as to sort of like what the region looks like and what the workforce looks like. So I think I would like to have a visual that is more like this for the city side of things, so that we have it for the schools and the city. And I, and I think overall, like, the document, to me, it was pretty sobering in terms of just, like, the needs across facilities for, you know, the, the growth we've taken on and the growth that we expect. And so I think it's important that we're doing it. But also, when this goes out to the public, I would like for it, you know, to be more realistic in terms of, you know, what are the priorities? All of these things don't have equal weight. So if it's really a priority to figure out, you know, where people in city government are working and what those facilities are like on a daily basis, then like, to me, I sort of don't think, like, the pool should be in the facilities chapter, because I think it doesn't make sense to say to the community that, like, you should wish for a pool and sort of get, you know, sidetracked with the idea that we're having a community pool when we need to, like, invest money and space for people to actually work on a daily basis. So that's kind of like a global remark. And then I, you know, had a few things along the way. But thank you for the overall work. I think it's important that we're doing it. But to me, I was like, oh, uh-oh, because a lot of this wasn't in the CIP. You know, it hasn't been in the CIP. I mean, the property yard's in the CIP, but, but other aspects of this.
I think it's partly because we haven't updated this since 2005, right? That was the last update. And so it's 20 years in the making. And while we got to the most urgent things, clearly, having this, like, comprehensive look is 20, 15 years overdue. Other comments, I guess, on the City Hall section, if we're trying to stick with the chapter updates before we get to. Okay. Because we can keep scrolling.
I had a quick question about community center. It's not necessarily for the comp plan, but there was, well, I guess it is for the, but there is some comments about parts of community center that needed, like, some refresh. And I remembered we were talking, Wyatt, during budget, we talked about the fact that Wreckin' Parks has a little bit of money in their budget. Is that something that could be used for that sort of thing? Or is it really supposed to be more, used more for, like, if we wanted to do something across Men Park?
The money is allocated for implementation of the Parks master plan. So that's how it's named in the capital improvements program.
Okay.
So it needs to be aligned with that.
Okay, okay.
And so currently, the plan is to use it for the Cavalier Trail playground equipment and then sort of still more notionally, the Crossman playground equipment. But we know we've got some more work we need to do.
Right, right, right.
Defining the scope of work there.
Right, okay. And then the, for, I do agree that, you know, this day and age, you know, I remember when you could just walk into Mount Daniel, just anyone could just walk in. And I think, you know, when everything started happening, then, but it is sort of, I do think about the fact that, especially because it can be open late, the community center, I do get worried a little bit about the safety there for our staff. I'd love to see some sort of safety vestibule. I think when Oak Street put that one on the back, that was a grant, maybe Senator Saslak got us that money, I'm not sure. But if there was a way, maybe we could get a grant or something for safety, I would love to see some sort of, you know, security desk or something. Just, again, you know, there's also those programs for the middle scorers that go till midnight at night, you know, and there's, anyone could walk in, you know, at midnight, you know, with ill intent. So I'd just throw that out there. I do support that. Thanks.
I noted that in the section for the community center, there was discussion about a public pool. So I will say that, I know Erin mentioned the pool, and it's just not a great economic environment to consider a facility like that. That said, I was, I will say, that is like one of the top things I hear about in the community. That's like, gosh, it's just a shame that we didn't add a pool up at the Meridian Campus. And I think there was a failed attempt of expanding the community center in the 90s. It didn't work out. And so if there's an opportunity to think about it creatively with a public-private partnership at, like, the next mixed-use project, like, this is one of the things I would like us to keep in mind of, how do we get creative when using spaces? And that does seem like one that would be nice if we didn't have to find public space for and could find a sharing opportunity.
Right, Madam Mayor, having lived through that debate that went on for years, a pool here would have taken massive parts of a park. And so that was a major reason why it doesn't, wasn't done here. But you're suggesting creative outreach to the private sector?
It mentions it as a strategy.
I think that's a great idea. And we ought to think about if we have. And we ought to think about if we have, I don't know, might it work into the property yard project, for example? So, yeah, I agree with where you're going, but hopefully, we're not saying, let's reopen that debate.
No, no, no. I think that ship probably sailed long ago, back in the nineties. But I think it was Strategy 2.3A that talks about, can we put public, community facilities in private developments through the special exception process? And so I think that was a creative way of talking, think about, you know, where their public needs and where we can get community benefits in a private development.
And this makes sense. I mean, coming from our Wreckin' Parks sort of meetings, we've talked about this. And when we've looked at, you know, site plans have talked about, you know, is there a way to have sort of Wreckin' Park satellite space in private development? And so, yeah, my, my point was just, I don't, I don't want people to misunderstand this and to start advocating for a community pool. In, especially since some of those conversations, you know, it happens pretty frequently where people come in and, like, ask about the pool. And the Wreckin' Parks Advisory Board, you know, often is explaining, like, we didn't take that on at the high school for a reason. Or it didn't happen at the Community Center for a reason. Or like, it takes something like 45,000 people to support, like, the economics of having a pool. So if we're gonna, you know, if we're gonna include it, I just, I just want it to be framed in a way that people kind of understand that we're not taking that on as the city as much as open to the possibility to partner on something like that, maybe.
I think adding in the public partner, public-private partnership possibility, that it also could include staffing. And one of the issues was staffing and operations expenses of a pool. That's why we didn't end up doing it at the high school, one of, some of the reasons we didn't. But again, to your point, in thinking creatively of adding, if you have it someplace else, you could also, the negotiations would be talking about maintenance of it, staffing of it, things that wouldn't have to be city, city staff and city maintenance. Because those were also things that, like, we didn't want to, you'd have to hire lifeguards, you'd have to hire, you know, the pool company. All the expenses that are incorporated with that were prohibitive. So just, I guess, echoing the sentiment that, to the extent we could do something like that for public-private, and not just for a pool, for, you know, other spaces as well, whether that's a dance, you know, studio or any of the other stuff. Because we probably have enough grocery stores.
I think on the partnership front, one of the things that came up during the property yard ULI TAP study is, in addition to like, a public-private partnership, you could potentially partner with the county, right? And make it a shared, shared-use facility. Maybe we could put it in the county so we don't have to find a home for it. But, but, yeah, I think the partnership angle can work a couple different ways.
Cool. I think Mary Beth, you know.
I do. This is just, this is sort of a tie between the Community Center and the schools. And that is that, when we opened Marine High School, we were very clear that it was also a community school. And it, and it really serves as a alternate Community Center location. So I think that needs to be reflected in here somewhere, either in the, either in the school section or the other. Like, there are people there almost 24/7 renting spaces, there's sports there almost every single night. There's camps, you know, Wreckin' Parks camps in the summertime. But it would be good when you're working with school staff, and I know there, there's probably some new school staff that you may not have worked with yet, but who are, who would be really helpful and talk, just figuring out how many of the Wreckin' Parks activities are actually taking place at the high school and the other schools as well. And then additionally, then there are other groups that come in and rent as well. They're, they get auditorium and other spaces are all really being used by the community almost all the time.
Just to echo that, when we are, when those of us who worked for a political, on a political action committee to have the bond approved, that was part of the discussion of how important that was and why, you know, we spent 120 million plus, that it's critical that we use it that way, too, not just as a school. So it serves the entire community.
Right. And that's why, you know, we went with the baseball field with the turf, because the same, same idea is that Wreckin' Parks could rent it out to travel baseball teams and that sort of thing without destroying the grass.
I'm not exactly sure where that goes, because it's not, but it should be in here somewhere.
We can look at reflecting it. I also wanted to add, we've been able to meet with some of the new staff at schools, which has been very helpful to establish some of those relationships and for advice on this chapter and beyond.
Okay, anything else? Justine?
So I recognize a lot of this section specifically overlaps with the Wreckin' Parks chapter. But specifically, like, in terms of turning some of this into action eventually, let's say, the assessing, having some sort of assessment of the, the needs that we have and what the, it says, what city residents want and capture some of the recreational spaces that we would desire. Would that be something unlike space for employees that, that City Council would actually need to have as a priority to be able to make progress on that?
I think in drafting this chapter, we identified that as a bit separate from the roadmap for city workspaces. Because as has been mentioned, we do have the new schools, campuses and things like that, that it isn't, from the conversations we had, we didn't get the impression that it's a dire need, something that we need to address in the next five, three years. But is something that, that is a want. And if, as a city, we pride ourselves in providing great community spaces and services. And, and so making sure that we are staying leaders in that field and meeting the desires and needs of the public is something we, we want to, wanted to address, but wanted to keep a little bit separate from the other part.
So there's, yeah, this falls, as Erin was mentioning, this falls more into the want category than the need category. And so if we did want to make any sort of progress on this specifically, we would probably need to address this as part of a work plan or direct staff to move forward on something like this. Okay, thank you.
Move on to the library section?
Can I add one more quick school thing? Have we shown this to the new superintendent or will we show it to the new superintendent?
So we have invited the superintendent. We didn't get direct feedback. They, we passed it along to staff and left it up to them, whether they wanted to pass it along for both the previous superintendent and this superintendent. And we did not hear anything from either. We are planning on going to the school board in the coming months pending council's referral out. And so we will have, hopefully, some additional discussions with both the school board and superintendent at that point.
Great, thank you.
We've had, we've had several engagements with Dustin, right, from, from the school staff? And he's been our point of contact on this. So I believe he's briefed the superintendent, but that's been our conduit to.
Great. And, yeah, I think he's been filling in for Krista Michael after her departure, more on the facilities piece. And so, you know, the school board's great, but they don't oversee facilities. That's, that's operations, so.
I think between Dustin and Kevin, me, we're plugged into their team.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Okay, library. Who's got comments on the library section?
I think just the same overall comment as on City Hall with regard to, you know, going through the bond referendum and spending on, money on that expansion, that the intent of a bond refer, you know, that the, the facility that was expanded should last through the bond payment cycle. Like, we should be building enough to be, you know, I, I just am a little uncomfortable thinking about going back and going to another bond referendum for either City Hall or the library. Maybe they're not at the dollar amount that would require a bond referendum, but there'll certainly be a lot of questions, like, wait, didn't, you know, didn't we just approve that? Didn't we just update? So that's just a general comment. I know things change and we'll look at specific situations, but that's the feedback I imagine we'll get from the community.
Yeah, I had the same feedback on, under evaluation of needs. I think there needs to be a pretty strong case on why we need to expand and do more with the facilities when it opened four years ago. I think we need to make a case on utilization, capacity, whatever the evolving needs are. I think we're willing to listen to those, but it would need to be a pretty strong case, given that we just went through this, it feels like.
So I think, you know, part of the staff's view, view on this as we put it together is we're trying to kind of lay out a chapter for the next 20 years. And so everything that, that's kind of been laid out, kind of in the draft that you're all seeing, isn't, aren't, some of those things are things I think, you know, we're going to advocate need to be done in the next five years, but a bunch of it isn't, right? And I think the point you're all making on the library, you know, is a great one. I don't, I don't think we read or envisioned that this was going to be something that anytime soon that, that the community was going to have to consider a big investment for. So, so I think we were trying to frame these, these under, kind of looking at things as a 20-year horizon. So that, that's why some of these things are.
To make that clear, because at the beginning, we were talking about like, five to 10 years. And we probably wouldn't know much beyond 10 years, because it's hard to project that far. Just to be clear, we're envisioning it beyond the five to 10-year scope. Hopefully, we won't wait another 20 years to do the next review of this comp plan and can have more, you know, concrete ideas of what our population looks like, what our financial situation is like based upon what's happening in the, in the region and the country. So I think just clarifying that, you know, people don't have, we're going to have another bond referendum for either City Hall or the library?
I think knowing what the planning horizon is, is important. But then, so tactically, and this jumps ahead, page 60 is when you start getting to the roadmap of like, here's all the most important things to do. I'm like, by when? Is this in the next five years? How do we prioritize it? So the roadmap, I think in my mind, besides telling us what the most important things are, needs to have some associated window. Like, this is a zero-to-five-year thing, this is a five-to-10-year thing. Because otherwise, it looks like we have a whole bunch of facilities we need to touch all over again.
Sort of like the CIP does, right?
And maybe that's where this guides the CIP and informs kind of what things get slotted in the six and seven-year CIP. But right now, when you read it, it actually reads like, everything needs more work and needs more debt, which we may or may not be able to do.
Yeah, it gets us back to what is this document? It seems different from other comprehensive plan documents. It's almost like the whole thing is a roadmap. It's very staff-driven so far. And I think what the council is saying is, we're not committing to this expansion. We're committing to a process to look at this expansion if necessary. I don't know if I captured it, but that's certainly my, my view of it.
Whoops, I think the other piece of it is, because this hasn't been done in so many years, we've been piecemealing it as we go. And it'd be great to have a really robust, this is what needs to happen all across the city in the next 20 years. And that's how we ended up having to do the library and City Hall and high school all at the same time, is because there hadn't been that planning online. So if this is, when this is done and it's done right, it'll be really good to have that ability to, to really take a look over 20, 25 years.
Anything else in the library section? Okay, property yard. And why, before I forget, we have time scheduled to get the ULI TAP report out on recommendations for the property yard. So we'll have a more meaty discussion then.
Yeah, I kind of thought, I wanted to hear that first before, when we get that report, then it can, we can.
Inform this.
Yeah, inform this and make sure it all ties together. And that's next Monday.
It's the fifteenth.
Fifteenth.
That's right, two weeks from now.
I would, I mean, I had the same thought, you know, and I would almost support, I mean, instead of referring this out on the eighth, like, holding this and having the property yard discussion and then referring this out after we have that conversation so that, you know, our maybe reactions to the report are kind of captured and encompassed in the property yard section of this draft plan before it goes out. And then we're like, trying to catch up with it based on comments that may come out of the ULI TAP conversation. So just a thought as to what flexibility you have there, given that they're so closely timed.
I think it makes sense. I think the question for staff is, you have that joint session between the PUC and the Planning Commission on the 17th. So if we didn't refer it out, then would that make it tough to make that session or?
I think it would make it possible to make that session, right? So, so I think, I don't know, Matt, you want to take this one?
Yeah, my understanding is that the action on the eighth is simply the initiating resolution.
And the referral.
Okay. Maybe this can be decoupled perhaps, or do we need both? And the meeting on the 17th is really more of our introductory discussion. We'll be back to the Planning Commission. It's not their only instance to provide feedback. But I think it was an opportunity to provide that initial reaction prior to us engaging many other stakeholder groups over the next two to three months. So this is really entering into an open dialogue and kind of feedback solicitation. It's going to take us well through Thanksgiving, early December. So there is some flexibility, but we didn't really view any of the upcoming conversations as closing the scope of the analysis or kind of cementing any of the recommendations. It's really, I think, allowing us to get more feedback from different groups, so.
I think delaying the referral, like, we could do that and then, you know, potentially move the, the Planning Commission briefing. But with the council scheduled this fall, the next time, we would probably come back to you all for a regular meeting.
October 27th?
Twenty-seven.
Well, the Planning Commission's joining us for that joint session. So it could be, we could refer it out and be like, well, actually, we're all getting together again and talking about it. So make sure that that discussion informs your discussion on the 17th with PUC, so.
Here we go.
That seems like it would be fine to keep the schedule as long as everyone keeps it in mind, yeah.
Yeah, that sounds fine to me. I just had a quick question. The note about the, like, the foundation where the buses are sitting, that it's giving way or failing or something, is that something that needs to be, you know, because the, the whole redevelopment is going, years and years and years down the road. Is that something we need to address before then? If so, do we need to get, because I guess my point here is that I think the schools obviously need to come in with us and financially and help us shore that up if, if it's an urgent need. I don't know. I couldn't tell by, if it was just something we need to think about or if it's something that needed to be fixed in the next, near future.
So I think we've done some short-term repairs to rebuild it is, is a costly project. And I think really is dependent on what the future kind of layout and, and location of that, whether that's a smart decision to make or not. So I think it's something that we've, we've talked to the city staff, you know, Herb's team's done some work out there to kind of, you know, do some repairs. So I think in the short term, we're okay.
Okay.
In the longer term, like, like, something should probably.
Yeah, okay. And also, I mean, the ideal, I guess, would be to find an off-site, just location to park them, right? I mean, and I think the city and you all were, I'm sure, part of this when I was on the school board. But, you know, they used to be parked at the old high school. And then when everything, you know, thank you, so, thanks for, on behalf of the schools, for housing those school buses. But that's a lot of area that they take up. So I know it would be ideal if we could find an off-site location, so.
I think it's both, yes, it takes up a lot of space and it's, it's like a crummy layout for them. It's, it's hard for them to navigate, you know, and, and so the kind of future of where we want to go, I think those are the kinds of things we want to correct.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, you know, as I look at the map on page 22, this is, this is an example of a past where real estate was plentiful and its needs came up. You just built a building to deal with them. And my hope is that we can find ways, for example, putting the vehicles in parking garages that serve affordable housing, for example, or affordable housing elsewhere. And you could locate recreational facilities fairly near to where you have other uses that, that you're not disturbing people in their residences. So I think there's a huge opportunity here. Hopefully, is that captured anywhere here to really go big on this one?
So, you know, I think that gets us into the discussion that we'll have in two weeks, where we enlisted the Urban Land Institute to help us think about those types of things. Co-sort of uses of, of site and, and how then what we do here interacts with the commercial land that's around it.
Right.
So there is a larger discussion to be had, and we're planning to do that in two weeks. We do reference the ULI TAP. And I think our goal would be, as we go through the process, that we could fold in some of those ideas that we engage with boards and commissions on, the Planning Commission on, and City Council on, more. the Planning Commission on, and the City Council on more prominently into this comp plan amendment, uh, amendment right now. We're, we're still, we've been processing the ULI TAP, so we didn't want to put it in here yet before the council had really seen it. So I think that's sort of the order that we were envisioning.
And that may not be the only source of expertise for this.
That's true.
I mean, um, there are all kinds of models that might work here that would achieve a number of goals. So, um, I just, does the document really capture that possibility here?
I think the current document.
Doesn't look like it to me, maybe I missed it?
Yeah, I think the idea for the structure of specifically this section and as well as City Hall and, and some of these other sections that were, were saying we need to take a larger look at the needs is to cover that in the previous section in 2.1 in kind of more general terms. And so currently, we do not have some of the more specific strategies or actions that we could be looking at for property yard in this section. But that's just in the current state and, um.
It sounds like based on Dave's input, we should probably, and the fact that we're pending that ULI discussion, we should have a big block of placeholder for kind of more creative uses of how to use the space more efficiently.
Yep.
To meet the current needs, the unhoused population, affordable housing, all those things.
Placeholder for now.
A placeholder for that after the ULI discussion.
Because we could, we could really go big on this, I think.
Especially with the opportunity for private land if they're interested in.
Yep.
I will say the affordable living policy that we adopted last month did, we did commit to expanding our unhoused services and facilities as part of that. So I know it's one of the actions called out already, but given that we just did a comp plan update where we made commitments or espousing, that we would do more, like us to remember that. Okay, so we'll revisit this after the ULI discussion.
Right, and there should be a placeholder in the document right now, just a short thing. Maybe strategy two, five, I don't know, whatever. Okay, thanks.
Okay, any final thoughts on property yard? Okay, moving to schools. Who's got comments on this? Well, my first one, I guess I'll go first. Um, I think it was either in the narrative or in the charter, but probably both. I noted that said that we had school capacity for the next 25 years, which might be another like 10 years more than I remember. But that's good news if that's the case. I thought the last, like, update from the schools, we had like capacity for 10 or 15 years, but.
I, I think that was based off of the latest projections projecting out to 2050. So, um, that's where that 25-year mark.
When we engage our school partners, let's just confirm that because we want to say the same thing.
Yeah, in my mind, on the infrastructure, that is not capacity, but wear and tear, like you mentioned at MEH there, you know, it's to the point where I believe there's a new roof required and, um, so just keeping note that capacity is important, but it's also maintaining the facilities to be able to house that capacity.
And as I said earlier, I mean, I think this has come up in our conversations, you know, and this is looking at physical capacity, but the capacity drives, right, other costs and it drives everyone's budget because of cost sharing. But, you know, these capacity numbers, um, may look different from what the current schools look like and, and how they operate and classroom sizes and the things that people are used to seeing in schools. And so I think, you know, we can have this here, but it's sort of with a bit of a caveat. And then I was just wondering on the high school numbers, when we have the 1,200 to 1,500 range, is that because of the, like, potential for the additional floor? Or this is the 1,200 to 1,500, like, as-built? Because I, no, because I want, yeah, no, no, I mean, I want it to be an as-built number and not a, like, you know, further investment contingent number.
As-built, if you go to the top floors, you can see where it's open space and those were planned as additional classrooms in the future.
Okay, thanks.
And it also was a range of, for capacity-wise, that every teacher has their own classroom now. So if they get to 1,200, there's space. For 1,500, it would be more like a college model where every classroom would be used all day long and teachers would go in and out, which is not anything any teacher wants to hear. But that was that, that extra 300 capacity when we, when it was done that way was what that was meant to be.
And just FYI, this is just for those who don't have middle schoolers. Um, I, I think, you know, I really appreciated, um, Mayor, your comments about, uh, you know, we just paid off MEH, right? And we're still good, but one of the things when we connected those two schools is my eighth grader now has PE in Meridian and my eighth grader takes Spanish at Meridian. So Mary Ellen Henderson's tight and for gym and certain things, and they're now flex spacing, sending eighth graders over to Meridian. And that's exactly why we connected those buildings. So I think it's a great show of, you know, really some good design there and having some flexibility for the future.
So actually, I think that would be a good thing to add in there, just that, that, that pre-planning, because there was a time when we were talking about adding on to the middle school, remember? When we started that whole process, we were going to put a $300,000 addition on the middle school and build a high school, and then it ended up being able to be a single addition. Or a single building.
Anything else on schools? Okay, so move on to the farmhouse. Hang on, the farmhouse or Gage House?
I had a question about the Gage House. Um, and I know, because I know the, uh, the farmhouse obviously has antiques inside and that sort of thing. Were, are we limited? And I know, I understand Gage House has, is on the historic register. Are we able to do anything on the inside of it? Like, could we, could we gut it? And I'm just saying, I'm just throwing it out there. Could we gut it to make it a real, like, office? Because right now, like, from reading the description, from reading the description, it seems like it's not very set, it's not really set up for offices. My point was like, could you, you know, again, if we had the money, blah, blah, blah. But are you able to do things on the inside of Gage House or put on an addition if you don't change the historic look of it? I was just curious.
I think that's something we'd have to.
Okay.
I don't think that, that there's a lot of flexibility to do what you're asking, but I don't have a good answer. We'll have to get back to it.
I was just trying to think of solutions, you know, if, and granted, everyone, I know, I understand everyone wants to see studies and all that, but if it came out that, yes, we need more space, I was just trying to see, like, be creative where we could put people. Okay, thanks.
I was just going to add for the farmhouse and Gage House that I appreciate that in the strategies, um, you know, it, it has a strategy of ensuring that project managers and contractors are certified to work on historic properties and that we're, you know, committed to that. And then also for Gage House, yeah, I mean, if it, if this is a 20-year document and longer term, it seems like there's a movement toward potentially retiring Gage House. I know in places, like retiring it from possible city use or using it for something else. I don't know if that should be more kind of clearly reflected, like in other places. We talk about, you know, vacating deficient spaces or whatever. Um, but whether it's, whether it's here or, you know, like, to say, as you have, like repurposing the building, I think if you just look at Laura's question, like, consistent with the code ordinance, like, there is some conceivably flexibility for doing interior renovation, so long as you're not, um, like altering the exterior or the additions, depending on where they're located and not like overwhelming the appearance and aesthetic of the building. So there could be possibilities there, but I take, you know, the point of it's not a, it's not a great sort of functional space right now.
This is specifically one of the things that we were talking about with kind of deficient workspace, yes. We can make it clear.
Okay, anything else? And we also, yes, we had Gage House and Aurora House, I guess, as part of the section. Anything on Aurora House? Before we move on to public safety? Okay, I think we're moving on to public.
Just, I had mentioned earlier to mention the Government Energy Action Plan at the beginning, but I'm also thinking it, it should be throughout as well, so that it doesn't get lost.
Yeah, thank you. We went back and forth on this a few times and ended up in this version deciding to call it out at the beginning and say it, kind of say it applies to all of them. But that's something that's flexible if, if we think it would be more effective to call it out at, in each section. That's a possibility.
I think because you're going into pretty much a lot of detail in all of these. And just Aurora House is one example that, um, the decision to add solar panels there, the request came from a citizen group and from the ESC, and City Council acted on that. But that wasn't in any plan until it kind of came up. So it would be good if it was in some plans as we talk about all these different buildings to talk about our commitment to the Government Energy Action Plan.
There should be, I mean, Andy knows this better than anybody, but cross-references from that action plan that all tie into each of these facilities. Right, so the action, you don't have to create additional strategies. They've already been created through the GOEP and maybe we take them from that plan and incorporate it into this, this chapter. And I know that ESC folks would be super happy to see it spelled out as part of a comp plan as well. So I don't know if that's when you were looking at it and it made it too unwieldy to include those action plans, but I do think they're very specific and they're already mapped out in that plan extensively.
I think we had intended to, rather than repeat the content, just refer back to the, the Government Energy Plan. And I think the team had originally kind of mentioned it in numerous spots in the report. And then I encouraged us to help cut down on the number of pages and, and, and simplify some of the recurring themes at the beginning. So we, we can kind of work with whatever.
Yeah, maybe there's a compromise at the beginning that you highlight, you know, that there are action plans within that GOEP that meet with each of these buildings and be sure to reference it, you know, if you don't want to spell it out again and make it, you know, 90 pages of a document. But, yeah, but they do link pretty directly facility by facility. Thanks.
Okay, public safety.
Madam Mayor, can I talk about the redundant power sources with uninterrupted power supply for critical systems and back, backup generators? This has been an ongoing issue, and I'd like to know what we've done and what we need to do. Do I need to go to the office of the CEO of Dominion Power and demand that they give us a redundant power supply? I mean, we've been talking about this for two or three years. We have power blackouts that, that.
Impact businesses.
Yeah.
Impact City Hall's facilities.
Right, so where are we and what do we need to do to solve this?
Would you all like me to take that? All right, so we do have a plan with Dominion that ties into the Park Avenue Great Street project. Dominion has designed it. Dominion will pay for the transformer upgrade that we need to bring in from Broad to City Hall, so coming in from the Cherry Hill Farmhouse side and will sit between the two buildings. And they will cover those costs because we can use the Park Avenue Great Street conduits and easements to complete the connection. That project will give us the redundancies if we go down on the North Washington side feed we'll pick up from Broad. Also, if we go down on Broad, then North Washington can feed us. That project is running concurrent with the Park Avenue Great Street, so I've been working with Tara and Amanda to look at, see if there's any way to expedite that project. That project's progressing, it's just in the right-of-way stage, so we can't do the Dominion part without the Park Avenue piece because they come together. So there is a plan, there is a process, but right now it's tied to the Park Avenue Great Street project.
It's scheduled to start 2027?
Yep. So we're actively in the right-of-way stage. The Dominion engineering team has been working with our consulting team for all the easements, the conduits and all of that alignment. I can give you that at a high level. More detail, we'll have to have the DPW team provide more detail. But we have a plan, it's just now the sequencing of it. Also, I will say that when we do North Washington streetscape plan and we improve the intersections, the road alignment and underground all the utilities, as I look at Tara, because as you all know, we have cars hit those poles and that's what's causing the problem. When those are underground, that will immensely help our resiliency as well.
And that North Washington project is when?
FY '28 in the current adopted CIP per starting of design.
I mean, it doesn't seem like something that has to be part of a huge plan, but maybe it does. Um, in the meantime, what's the situation with our generators?
So our generators, we've done internal studies, just how we could have it operate more effectively. And so we, um, we'll need to schedule time with the council. It's, it would be a change to our capital improvements program where we have in our multi-year CIP some money next year planned for generator. It's really not to upgrade the generator, it's to change the wiring inside this building so we're using that generator more effectively. Um, and that is expensive, it rises to a CIP project. So one discussion we could have with the council is moving that project forward this year so we could accelerate that project. So we want to have, kind of get everything lined up for what that scope of work would be and the feasibility of it, and then come to council with a price tag and then we can make a decision, or the council can make a decision whether we'd have that resiliency, at least for this building. The community center operates 100% and kind of flawlessly on its generator. And we've been struggling with this building in terms of how that, the generator we have for this building actually supports what we need to be able to, um, be open to the public when we, when we get off the grid. So we do have a budget amendment discussion coming up in, uh, in a couple of weeks, I think, in, in the October timeframe. And so as we consider a budget amendment, I think we'd like to have that discussion with council about what the possibilities are.
Thanks for getting on this because it's, we all know it's fundamental, so, thanks.
Anything else in the utilities, public services, public safety sections?
Is this, is this a section with the fire hydrants? Okay, um, I just had a quick, this is, I guess, a Wyatt question. Um, so I was interested about the water pressure that's tested every couple of years. Is that right?
Uh, well, it's tested on an ongoing basis.
When we put like a new one in or?
So we don't do the testing. Fairfax Water does the testing. They have a program where they exercise hydrants on a, on a regular schedule. And so that's how they get data in terms of what their actual flows are and water pressure is.
And they keep, as we're going to be adding all these new hydrants, they'll keep testing to see?
Well, they do that whether we're adding new hydrants or not. That's part of their routine surveillance of their entire system.
Right, but the water pressure could be more difficult as we add more and more hydrants?
No.
No? Okay.
It's, it's not that, it's really kind of the state of the system. And so what drives it is the water storage, the tanks, and then the diameter of the pipes.
Okay.
And so they make investments on a regular basement, uh, basis to replace some of the older water mains. They get corroded over time and they kind of get occluded, sort of like an artery might, you know, uh, with, with mineral deposits and things like that. And so they have to replace them from time to time. That's their, that's very expensive to do, but that's kind of the 50-year replacement schedule for water mains.
Okay, okay. Yeah, thank you for clarifying that. I just wasn't sure, the way I read it was as we're adding all these fire hydrants, that we had to keep an eye on water pressure, but that alleviates my concern there. Thank you.
On page 43, Action 3.4A, can you just tell me what that means? Establish a secure supply chain pharmacy machine? I figured that had a specific definition.
Yes, as best as I can. That came out of a discussion we had with the Arlington Fire Chief, and it is part of a state regulation, I believe, pretty recently passed. I would have to confirm when in the specifics, but it's essentially, from how it was described to us, ensuring that there is a place to have this pharmacy machine, which might even look a bit like a, like a vending machine, or some form of secure way to have these medications available directly at the fire station as part of the EMS duties of the fire.
Thanks.
Okay, anything else on this section before we move to stormwater and sanitary sewer?
Just very quickly on the fire section, do we have adequate water pressure throughout the city?
There are areas that we think that, we've been in contact with Fairfax Water about where we've been concerned about water pressure. So they have come out and done some additional testing, and, and there are some fire flow, there are some water pressure deficiencies in the city.
There are some what?
Water pressure deficiencies in the city.
So what do we need to do to address them? Do you need our help at the elected official level?
So we're working with Fairfax Water on it. It kind of comes down to their capital improvements program. The council may recall also some earlier discussions about the water tank at Seven Corners. They've been making changes to their pumping and kind of other things that have, I think, helped address water pressure that they were intending to address with that water tank. And we have asked them, because we're, we are aware of some of these pressure issues, we've asked them whether that tank is something that would address it as well. And I, you know, I think we're, I think they're still assessing what would be the best strategy for addressing some of the areas, sort of pockets in the city where there are water pressure or water flow issues. And so I, I think it's, more information is coming on that, is the bottom line. And Andy, I don't know if you have, you've been in the most recent meetings with Fairfax Water?
So we, we have a regular engagement with them. It's partly related to the new fire hydrants that we were discussing earlier, but also, you know, I think some of these kind of, kind of testing issues that have come up. And so we've got an update with them, I think, again on the 15th. And so we're looking for them to come back to us, and I think what they owe us is kind of a more kind of systematic kind of set of tests and things that they're going to do, and then the associated kind of follow-up of investments that are needed, and where they fit in their plan and the like. So, so more information to come, I think.
I, I, I guess, this is really critical. So what do you need from us at this point? I mean, do I walk over to Fairfax Water? You know, I'm sure that would be very popular, but is that what I need to do? Or what do we need to do to get this resolved within days?
Well, we have a meeting, as Mr. Young mentioned, coming up soon, where I think we're going to get more information on that, and we can report out to the City Council on what Fairfax Water's plans are. There is like, as, as an example, on South Spring Street, there are some hydrants that currently have a bag over them, and that's a very specific situation on South Spring Street because of essentially aged water main. And so that is one where Fairfax Water's informed us that they are planning to put in additional or new pipes there, and that's something that would not require a long lead time. I think there's some other parts of the city where there's, it's going to be a longer lead time to get the, to have the engineered solution that, that they think will, will serve best. We need to get more information on that.
Well, I, I don't know, Mr. City Manager, if it's useful, but I'd like to suggest that the, you know, that the mayor sends a letter with our agreement urging that this be addressed in days. I mean, this is fundamental. I mean, one of the things that really was a problem with the LA fires was that they didn't have adequate water supply in some places. So, I mean, we can't, I don't know, I don't know how to express it, but just finding out about this now, we really need to move on this. And what can we do as a City Council to express our sense of urgency about this?
I guess my question going, I share the concern, because this is also the first time that we're hearing that there may not be adequate water pressure. So I guess what responsibility does Fairfax Water have to inform the local governing bodies when there are issues, so we can take appropriate action? Like, is it, are there various levels, like, this is not a big deal, or own, or this is actually like a life safety concern, right? Like, I guess I don't know how low is low water pressure. Like, I'm not an expert there, so I guess I'd like to know, like, what is the normal reaction? Aren't they supposed to tell us if there's an issue, so that we can decide, like, this is serious, these are our residents, our businesses that we care about that might be at risk? And I guess, I don't know whether we've triggered that, but if we have triggered that, then I agree with Dave that we should do something about it. I did, so this was in that later section, but the water tower, water tank at Seven Corners, which I remember was a new, I was new on council when we discussed it, and I think the then-council was not interested in pursuing it for various reasons. If there are public safety concerns, I think, hearing the sentiment of this council, I think it's certainly something that we'd be more open to that discussion.
If, if I recall, the real issue back then was where the tank was located, that there were other places where the tank could be located, other than at Eden Center. And I think that was a real discussion, and then it just sort of floated away at that point. That's my recollection. Wasn't that we were proposing a tank, but we were questioning, why was the tank there as opposed to other locations? And I thought they were going to go back and look at that. That's my recollection of that.
So in any case, I guess my recommendation would be understand, like, how severe is this water pressure issue? I guess I had asked Fairfax Water as our utility to assess that, and then if it is something that's pretty urgent, then I think we all agree that we don't want our residents and our businesses at risk, and we should see quicker action.
So more information to come on this, and we, we share the concern.
Okay. Thanks for raising that, Dave. You had something, Laura?
Yeah. Yeah, well, thank you. That got to kind of what my question, thank you, Debbie, that was sort of where I was going with my hydrant question. Why, I was, so looking at sanitary sewer, on page, so we're on page 46 for those following along at home. So sewer rate studies, it looks like the last one was done in 2019. Are we having one coming up?
So that was with an outside consultant, and I generally view that internal staff are capable of doing the rate studies, and so I don't anticipate that we'll have a sewer rate study. And the analogy I make is the city budget is, you know, $120 million, and our finance staff work with staff and develop a very complex budget. The sanitary sewer system, on the other hand, is a very simple enterprise fund, and, and we're capable of assessing what our costs are and what the rates need to be. It's worthwhile, once in a long time, to do a check on that, but I think as a regular matter, we can handle it internally.
I, I was just asking, because it looked like for a while we were doing them every four or five years, so. No, I have complete confidence in the staff. I just, what was the one we just, was it stormwater that we just increased a little, a few dollars for?
Yeah, we have been in the mode of doing small kind of CPI-related changes to those utility funds to avoid sort of a rate shock situation.
Right.
If you hold off on that and do it every five years.
Okay. And then I was looking at Action 4.1B, FOGs, fat oils and grease, and, and looking at, you know, I was reading, given the city's small size, regular flushing of select sewer lines is an efficient, cost-effective way to address grease accumulation. But I was wondering, has that changed with the number of restaurants that have come in?
So mostly the issues that we have as of right now is with the older system, because in the newer system or restaurant that is adding to the city, we, as part of the permits and regulation and codes, we require them to have some devices like the, like the grease separator, or some other devices that be able to control those additional grease that is, or oil or fat that is adding to the system. So the issue is still with the older areas, like the Eden Center, and by just setting up the targeted flushing and regular flushing, so we do not have that much of the issue, and so, and no accumulated grease has been occurred before. So we are pretty good in managing those areas.
Well, that's really interesting. So basically, the new, the new restaurants are dealing with this sort of in-house before it even gets into the pipes?
Correct.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And we didn't make proper introductions at the beginning of the meeting, but we are joined by Reza Ravandust, who's here, Senior DPW Engineer, and we also have Bahila Kiflu, who you know well from ordinances and things like that, that he's brought, but they're here to speak on sanitary and storm and other engineering issues.
It's pleasure to be here.
Yes.
Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Can I make a quick PSA, mostly because my did, my kid did a project about it. So apparently there's something called fat bergs, when it's flushable wipes that aren't really flushable, mixed with fat oils and greases that clog your sewer system. So don't flush those flushable wipes, because they're not flushable. So.
So maybe one inject here. So the, the Fairfax County sewer agreement is still kind of in process, so, so I think we'll intend to bring that back to council for a work session, and then, and then hopefully adoption in October. So we've got a meeting with Fairfax County later this week. So they've approached the city at the beginning of the summer with an alternative to addressing the, the peak flow challenges that have kind of held us up from getting kind of an agreement thus far. And so Fairfax County has a stormwater project that they're currently working in trips run south of the city. I think it's by Barrett Road. But during the design of that pro, pro, project, they've identified the need to relocate the sewer main that runs through that stretch of the county, which just so happens to be one of the choke points in the, the peak flow that they've been kind of concerned about with us. And so they've approached the city about, hey, instead of building your flow equalization tank, would you be willing to partner with us on this sewer project and make it bigger to be able to handle the, the city's needs? And so the specifics are important, and we're, we're working through those and going to talk with them about it later this week, but I think collectively, the team, we think it's a pretty promising option for the city to consider. And so when we come back to talk to you in October, it's likely, that'll be more of the flavor of what we're, we'll share with you, and, you know, the staff's recommendation on how to move forward on that, so.
Any idea, is it, is it price-wise, any, any idea, like, is it comparable to, or would we save a little bit of money going this?
We don't intend to spend more money.
No, but I'm, I'm wondering, because the old, the basin was supposed to be very expensive, right?
So I think the CIP was like $10.8 million for the basin. There's a couple moving parts, so it's, I don't.
And I'm not trying to put you in a corner.
But, but our intent is to kind of land on a solution that's more cost-effective to the city, kind of all the different components considered.
And I'm sure you're taking this into consideration, but when you come back to us, right, it's, it's, it would be not potentially doing the tank and investing in their investment to help relieve the issue that we were building a tank to address, but we also had the second phase of, you know, what our longer-term capacity needs would be. And so whatever we're investing in this project is presumably addressing the longer-term needs as well.
All of that's, well, we're taking into consideration.
Okay, anything else on stormwater or sewer?
Mayor, I, I, this is actually just for anyone who might be listening, you know, to your point about how the newer commercial developments are handling their grease and that sort of thing different. I also wonder why, if you could just, for any, the public who might be watching, explain also about stormwater. I was, I was, when I prepared to run last fall, and I learned about the Broad in Washington building has big cisterns underneath to collect stormwater. So I thought, could you just say a word or two about, for people who talk about development, like, part of that also is when this new development comes in, there's better, more updated stormwater management. Is that correct?
Could I invite Mr. Kiflu to answer that question?
Thank you for the opportunity. So Broad in Washington, they have a big cistern on the right side. That is a part of the development requirement. So every time they exceeded the impervious area in post-development, they have to detain the excess runoff from the extra impervious area they added in post-development condition. So not only that, but they have to meet the water quality requirement also. So that detention, I believe it has also the cartilage that treat water, reducing nitrogen and phosphorus mainly. I believe they have also green roof. That is also requirement per the DEQ water quantity and quality requirement. It's not only Broad in Washington, but everywhere we go, Founders Row, One, Two, West End, they all meet the requirement, to meet water quality and quantity requirement by proposing green infrastructure, like green, green roof, bioretention, permeable pavement in the underground detention facility, so at Broad in Washington.
Thank you. That's, that's great, because I, I think sometimes, you know, people see the new developments coming in, there's more concrete and that sort of thing, but as I've told people, I said, you know, obviously I'm not a stormwater engineer, but my understanding was that, that is taken into account how much impervious, and, and then that, the builders have to then account for that, and that's part of the way that we would approve the building to be built, that they're going to manage that stormwater. Yeah.
Yeah, of course. So when they submit the plan, we will go through the stormwater analysis, including the base management practice they propose. If that practice meet the DEQ requirement specification standard, but the basic requirement is whenever they increase the impervious area, they have to offset the additional runoff coming from the additional impervious area.
Right.
Just to mitigate the flood concern on the downstream side.
Right.
I mean, we don't have enough capacity in our system in some areas, so that is how they have to detain the excess runoff on their lot, so our capacity doesn't overwhelm because of the extra runoff from the, from the lot.
Right, thank you. Thank you very much.
I remember in our voluntary concessions, not only do they have to detain the excess runoff, but I think we usually negotiate a 20% reduction in the pre-development runoff conditions. Is that?
Yes.
So it's actually not just like as good as it before, but it actually has to be better than what is before.
Yes.
And that was an additional voluntary concession we've done for pretty much every project since 2016.
Thank you.
Just to add, I think the question is, what is the volume? It may be managed better, but what's the volume that's eventually added to the, the city system in the stormwater case? And then secondly, in the sewer case, what's the volume that those projects have added, triggering CIP projects? It's a fundamental question.
Okay, other comments?
I just have a final one on stormwater, and it's more to make a plug that we don't forget to do this, but as an action item or strategy, can we please return to updating the stormwater credit program to encourage residents to keep more water on site? So thank you.
Okay, anything else on stormwater and sewer?
The last section is on third-party utilities. So this is communications, electricity, gas, and water. We covered water a bit already. Comments on those?
Madam Mayor, I think I made some comments on City Hall and service and redundancy that falls. I don't know whether it's under that chapter of this one, but network comments on electric service. And I guess comments generally on whether the utilities are really advancing climate goals and what they're doing. I don't know if that can be added, but that should be a constant question we ask. What is Dominion Power doing to advance R and V mental goals? And what are the other utilities doing? Does that seem like a good idea to have that?
We talked about integrating the GOIEP early on as this, I guess, utilities and kind of the citywide service kind of relates to the CEEP. And, you know, the goals that we've committed to in the Community Energy Action Plan. And a large part of kind of seeing the reduction is Dominion playing a role, right?
Mm-hmm.
So maybe this is a place where we can connect back to the Community Energy Action Plan and address Dave's point.
Yeah, I think adding a reference is definitely possible. I think a lot of, we are cautious in these sections to maintain within the bounds of what our service agreements lay out, which Cindy can definitely touch on more. But that's some of the guiding principles and guiding structure in this last section.
Yeah, I see that you pick up the general idea and strategy 5.2E, maybe specifically with our list, the city's plans. What do you think, Mayor?
Yeah, and that's a good place to put it. If we link it in 5.2E and link that, you know, we espouse goals in the Community Energy Action Plan and it's aligned with. Okay.
This is just on telecommunications wires. I think, I'm sure everyone has seen, all these telecommunication wires just look terrible all over the city. They're just looped on wire, you walk past, they're just everywhere. And I wonder if there's a way to include that as a strategy or something to get telecom to clean up their wires? Because they just look awful.
So we're doing, we're trying to inventory it all and taking pictures of the poll numbers and sending them in. I think one of the purposes of granting a franchise agreement is to be able to hold those utility companies accountable for taking care of their equipment in the public right-of-way. So we have a regular reporting process. But I think the follow-up and sort of the enforcement mechanism is something that we are looking at is, how can we kind of get a better result than what we're seeing right now?
Yeah, I mean, they just look terrible. I'm thinking about ones on Seaton Lane in South Virginia and everywhere.
If you haven't, take a picture of them.
Take a picture and send it, yeah.
About a meeting ago.
Yeah, I welcome any photos that you want to send me. We did have an intern this summer that did a great job of, not every road in the city, but some of the core ones. And since the franchise agreements are up, we've been reaching out and I'm using that leverage.
Oh, great.
Cox and Bryson have been very responsive so far, but it's a matter of then getting it into the workload and scheduling.
Yeah.
A very immediate example is, because I knew the properties, we had them go out to Virginia Village, and Cox has cleaned up the properties the city owns there, and Bryson emailed me this week to do it.
Thank you.
I guess while we're on utilities, I did get inquiry about the W and O D lights. Is that happening? Are we making progress?
I've been on some emails, so I can do an update, or did you want to? Okay, so our project manager has been working with Dominion, and I have escalated that one up to Dominion as well. And there is a design solution now that's getting under final review by the Dominion Transmission Right-of-Way Group, the big power lines, to make sure we don't have a safety issue. So as of end of last week, we didn't have a timeline yet, but it was being reviewed and active again. And Gaston, who you know quite well, and Scott Price are tracking it for me from the government relations side of Dominion.
Okay. Anything else on the utility section? Okay.
I have another water question, and that is, there's still that giant tank at Mount Daniel. Remember when we put that Mount Daniel dish on and Fairfax Water required that big tank?
Yes, and so maybe just one quick note on that. So that was an example of an inadequate fire flow situation. Mount Daniel's at a high elevation. Fairfax Water made a series of infrastructure improvements, took about five years, and addressed water pressure issues in that whole part of the city. They also addressed it all along Lincoln Avenue. And you all may remember some of the broken water mains that occurred right after they increased the water pressure. So that's just a little bit of history of the investments that Fairfax Water is making to address some of these issues. The tank at Mount Daniel is no longer needed from a fire suppression perspective. I think there's some cost of dismantling it, and so it's a question for the schools, and I don't know what their future plans are for that tank. I don't think they have immediate plans to take it down, however.
I don't know, it's just there, it's just so big and there. Think about all the space there would be.
It's like how it could be repurposed for something cool.
Yes.
That's right.
Right.
Okay.
There's her auditorium. Office space, oh, that's a good idea.
Erin, you had.
Yeah, no, I had just one final thing, which is, and thank you again for everyone's work on this, two hours in, right? We're all really interested in all aspects of this. But I had just a comment really about having now gone through the public facilities chapter and the work we're going to do kind of with perfecting this chapter, that can we also use it as an opportunity, given that we included the sort of mixed-use report card as some of the attachments to reflect on whether we are accurately capturing some of the service costs that are associated with the growth that we've undertaken, and especially things like, you know, we talk about the police staffing increases. It was a surprise to me to sort of see like the sheriff's estimation of sheriff staffing like doubling over the next 10 years or something like that. And so like whether we're accurately capturing those costs, I think this is a good opportunity to look back at that document and those calculations as, and in doing that in tandem. So thanks.
Don't we do that mixed-use report card every two years? So we're probably due for one now?
Yeah, we do, and the focus is on the revenue side, where we try to compare our actual revenues to our forecast revenues. On the cost side, what we update is the projected school enrollment versus the actual school enrollment. The rest of the costs are modeled at time of approval, and they're modeled today. It is, you know, we'd have to, in order to assess like how many of new police officers, how much of it is because of new development versus other considerations? That's a little bit harder to get to the root of. I think that was a little bit more of the question that Councilmember Flynn was asking, and that has not been addressed in our mixed-use development scorecards in the past, because we kind of have to second-guess our own model and kind of crack it open, which we've not been able to do.
I think it's important to understand the components that are going into that modeling, though. Like what, I mean, I haven't seen the inside of that particular model, but having done financial modeling before, you make assumptions on what percentage, and that's how you decide what your costs are, that's how we decided what we're netting on each of these buildings. I mean, so I'm just adding to that point. We have, it's not that we made these decisions with costs in mind, right? Because we're netting that out. So let's discuss how those costs were, how do we arrive at those costs? And are we covering them?
So we do have a technical white paper that Tischler Vice provided us that explains how they do their cost modeling. And we can sort of bring that up to the fore again, so people can just read it and understand that methodology.
Some of us got the 101 before, but so it's probably good to refresh again?
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, I don't anticipate spending like a work session on it. I'm just asking staff to reflect on it, because I know that we, you know, oftentimes it's, oh, well, the costs are taken into consideration in the modeling that we do, and I want to make sure that the costs are actually taken into consideration in the modeling we do. When you look at something like this, and it's like 10 or 15 years, here are the costs that, yes, are due to just aging systems, but are also due to that many more people using systems and upgrades that need to happen, whether it's from however many fire hydrants we have to police staffing, to the size of staff at City Hall and expansions that we need to do, you know, commensurate to population growth overall.
If I remember the 101 from the model that we probably got probably five years ago, like 70% of the revenues in the model are due to property taxes. 70% of the cost is primarily due to school enrollment, which is why we pay so much attention to that. I think all the other costs are modeled, and that's why it said it's hard to get precise about increase in population to this means this many police officers, right? Some of it, like you said, is due to just natural growth and evolution of the city's infrastructure needs. I think they'll attribute like a one-to-one as much as we can with like pupils is really hard to do elsewhere, but I think that white paper would be helpful to circulate, especially in advance of the 2025 mixed-use report card. I think some of us had seen it in previous years, but we have enough new people now. It's worth doing again. Okay, other final thoughts? Laura?
And thank you, this is, obviously, we've all found this very interesting, as interesting as the CIP. We, I would just like to throw my support out for there for, on the last page was 61, developing a sanitary sewer master plan and a stormwater sewer master plan. I think that is really important. So I would just like to put, you know, a vote for, put a vote in for that. I think that would be, do a lot for us to help with future planning and infrastructure needs. And again, I would just like to throw it out there as something that we could think about down the road. But I would love to have our public safety offices centralized in one building and perhaps a more visible building. I know that that's a bigger, you know, discussion for down the road and lots of budget implications, but I would love to see that sometime. Thank you.
Okay, other closing thoughts? Okay, well, I wanted to thank everyone, Zoe and team, for the really hearty discussion. Clearly, we were all really engaged for two-plus hours on this. So thank you for the work. We look forward to be able to refer this out and see the next iteration on this.
Thank you all for your very thoughtful feedback. We will be taking it into consideration. And I also wanted to thank DPW staff and everyone else who has contributed a lot of work, time, and effort into this draft chapter, and hopefully will continue to work with us as we move forward. Thanks.
And welcome to the new faces, too. Okay, we have some quicker things, but do people need a break? Are we good at two hours and 10 minutes? Okay, so maybe like 9:37, so like six-minute break, we'll come back. 9:45, okay, 9:45, eight minutes. Okay. So maybe like nine 37, so like six minute break and come back. Nine 45? Okay. Nine 45, eight minutes.
Eight minutes?
Yeah, it's cool, Nick, because kids park at the metro.
Yeah, I'm also.
Yeah, but then, so they started locking it when they first, and then kids would have to go back to their car and then they couldn't get out there. They couldn't get back in. So it's this weird tension. So I'm trying to help them with that. But I, I went in that with all, we went, went over and talked to the altar phone. Like you have to tell people they can't leave their dog. But every morning, one morning I was there early, and this guy came out with his two little tiny dogs off leash, walking around, walking in front of the school. And there was no school yet. And then the first day of school I was there, and there's buses and there's kids. And this guy has two little dogs off leash. I'm like, dude, this is not gonna work. So there's a whole like, it's just, it's just super interesting. Cause there've never been people next to our school before, so no one really knows how to be, so.
Disappointed people are not working with their.
So am I. So like, basic decency, yes. And I think about it, like, you know, I walk my dog around Oak Street Avenue for years. And I always clean it up and sometimes he would poop like on the grass, like it was past my head. But, but there are big signs there that say, no dogs on field. And people live, you know, three brothers goes around the time. So it's just a general.
Facilities are, are surveillance or something, some sort of like.
Right.
So it's pretty dangerous. Or shame them.
Right.
Shame them in the.
But they bring their dogs, they bring dogs into the school sometimes. And people who are there, FXA thing, they bring a dog, they bring a dog in and like.
I'm just off the. Mine is fields right next to the sign, so there's dogs not allowed.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, mine.
Yeah, so people bring dogs into the grocery store.
Yeah.
They're like, just dogs.
People will do upstairs, but for a moment it's probably right there.
So.
All the time. I think that's.
It's not like, like last year.
Yes.
It's a lot of.
Right.
And they were. And they were. I never heard of. I've always. But only. Oh, yeah. Not that it's. You have, it's not like.
You are about to tell us.
I present a free con to. The, uh, the borough of City of New York. You have to bias and like here, making sure that's on the basketball if you make a good score. So it's kind of like, you better be right. No way, this is what you said, yeah?
Yeah. Yep. These two are gonna watch you.
Hmm.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you all.
All right. So next on the agenda is a discussion of the 2026 government holiday schedule. And our HR director, Sharon Gibson, will provide the staff report on it. And we thought the timing was great after one of the most beautiful Labor Day weekends in history, uh, which everybody enjoyed very much. Um, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Gibson.
Thank you. So TR 25 dash 29 resolution establishing the 2026 city government holiday schedule. Uh, for 2026, we have proposed 13 holidays. We do follow the Commonwealth of Virginia's standard schedule. And so, um, the schedule that you see reflects that. As a frame of reference, the 2026 schedule pretty much mirrors 2025, with the exception of half a day on, uh, Wednesday, 12:23. So offering four possible amendments to the proposed 2026 holiday schedule. There, um, the first one is add November 3rd, Election Day, that is observed by the Commonwealth of Virginia. It is every year that it's observed. Um, proposal number two, add November 25th and four hours of additional holiday time. That is a 2026, um, holiday that is being observed by the Commonwealth of Virginia in 2026. Um, also proposal number three, add two floating holidays to the employee leave program. This will allow employees to use those two days at their discretion for either religious or cultural, um, observances. Lastly, proposal number four, designate Rosh Hashanah or Eid El Fatihr as official holidays. Um, those come from doing sort of research across the region in terms of what are some cultural observations, in terms of holidays that are being recognized. It's more so in pu- the public schools than in local government. So if we wanted to expand the proposed 2026 holiday, those are the four possible recommendations. As information, it costs approximately $20,000 to cover a holiday.
Great. Thank you for your patience, Sharon, and joining us late through that public, uh, facilities chapter discussion. Um, comments or questions for Sharon? Debbie?
Just have a quick question. Uh, 20,000, I assume, is for public safety on most of the holidays. But what about Election Day when we have election staff and additional staff working around the city? The expense, it's additional expense presumably?
It, it would be some additional expense.
Nominal.
The, basically anybody who's working on that holiday is gonna be paid, you know, under the federal laws, a time and a half. And, um, so we have not run the numbers on what, uh, overtime would be on Election Day. That would be a different number than 20,000.
Um, this is sort of interesting for me. I'm sorry, were you done, Ms. Siskok? Okay. Um, because when I was on school board, we did a whole big thing about holidays. Um, and we ended up landing on just federal holidays. Um, so the schools now are open on Election Day. They didn't used to be, but now they are. Um, as someone who ran last fall, it was, it was reassuring knowing the staff was all here because there was a lot of stuff happening, you know, and I think there might've even been a medical emergency. I don't know. It's just, it's a crazy day. So, um, I don't know. I like having the staff here just as backup in case, um, we need it. Um, so I, I mean, I would support two floating holidays, that number three. I wouldn't really wanna, um, wouldn't support number four, um, again, for just, um, it's hard to, I think it's a slippery slope when you start deciding like which religious holidays we're gonna give off. But, um, I do like having some flexibility, giving people two floating holidays that they could use for cultural observances or religious observances. Thank you.
Other thoughts? Erin?
I was just gonna say, and Laura, you know, made this point on, I think it's helpful if there's consistency with the schools. Like if we're thinking across staff, um, you know, what those schedules look like. And I know the schools are, you know, normally a year out in planning than when we're even doing this. So, um, I think just, you know, checking for that. And then I didn't know for number two, um, do employees generally work that whole day? Or has the city manager a sort of a policy, like done an early release on the Wednesday of the Thanksgiving three days? Cause I don't know. I would tend to support an early release on the Wednesday if possible.
So that, what this common, that what we saw that the Commonwealth is proposing for 2026 is that they would have government offices open on No- November 25th, but grant an additional four hours of leave. Um, that's my memory of what the state government was.
It'll be a half day, so early closure. And so we didn't adopt that in this year, 2025. But it is something that the Commonwealth of Virginia is doing in 2026. So early dismissal.
We've not done that in the past. So this would be a new thing if, if we did that. It is very quiet around here on, uh, on that Wednesday.
Other thoughts? Christine?
Um, so would, um, to, ha- having floating holidays, would that actually bring costs down? Because then not everybody would be taking off the same days. Um, and I guess it wouldn't necessarily have to be, uh, a holiday that somebody takes off. It would just be an additional flexible day that's every, every employee would get.
Yes, the days would be flexible based on the employee's preference. So folks wouldn't be taking necessarily the same days. Um, I would, I would imagine that the costs are built into the budget because it is their daily pay for that particular day that they're gonna observe.
But it's two days in addition to the 13 that's proposed. 13 is what we budgeted for.
Correct.
And so the two more would be 15 then total. So it's more budget-wise.
Yes, correct.
But not maybe as much as 20,000 total each day. Um, I guess I, with, to Erin's point, I would be very interested in making sure we just have parity with the schools generally as best we can.
Have we also benchmarked with neighboring jurisdictions? Do they offer two floatings or what do they do?
So Arlington County is the only jurisdiction that offers floating holidays, two floating holidays.
In addition to the 13 Virginia and federal ones?
Correct. Uh, they do observe Election Day nationally. Uh, but when they observe Election Day, they do not grant President's Day.
Interesting.
Um, I would, uh, support keeping the general government open on Election Day. I think in addition to what Ms. Downs said about being open on the same days as the schools, I remember hearing the schools used to not be closed on Veterans Day and the city was. And there are always problems with buses and other things where they needed, the staff support was needed. And they, so, and they weren't available. So I think it's important if the, if the schools are open, the, the general government should be open if possible. And I think Election Day too is, there's just a lot of work going on that day. So that one I would not add. I would add the four hours of additional holiday time. I think that is a very, a good thing. Um, and the two floating holidays, as a school employee, um, I think that is a very good solution to that need to give people off for holiday time. Um, and if you, if you look at how the schools have done, they have a regulation and you have to request 30 days in advance to have that day off. And it does have to be a religious holiday. It can't just be my family reunion. So if you don't have two religious holidays, you, you don't take it, right? And if, if you're a Christian, most of the Christian holidays are all covered by days off anyway. So it, I don't think it turns out to be, everyone takes advantage of that. But you, you might ask the schools how that, how that has worked out. Um, but I think it's a re- a good way. It seems like if you give, make Rosh Hashanah a holiday, there's so, the, the number of people who celebrate Rosh Hashanah are then having their religious holiday and everyone else is having a day off and going to the movies. And that doesn't seem to match either. It seems like if you give a religious holiday, then someone can actually celebrate their religious holiday without feeling like they're missing out on the parties. So the other parties.
Other thoughts? We need to vote on this next week?
Um, yes, I, I think Ms. Gibson has encouraged us to bring this to the council sooner so people can plan ahead and, and it's just more orderly.
Okay. Well, do we have consensus on, I heard two or three voices for adding floating?
I'd be interested to hear. I, I'm not familiar with this, where the school policies landed on that with religion. I've been, haven't been involved in a couple of years, but was for many, many years and many years of discussions about it. So I would like if you have a conversation with them and come back to us with the, about how it might work for general government.
And this would be floating holidays?
Be floating holidays tied to religious or cultural events.
See, I don't, I don't think I support that because it seems a little, um, like for people that maybe don't celebrate, then what, why would some people get additional days off and other people don't? So some people have to work more days in a year than others?
That's why I wanted to see what, I'm not much familiar with what it, how the regulation reads and how it was resolved. So I'm, that's why I'm asking for more information before saying I'm weighing, you know, throwing my hat into anything. But I also agree on the, um, having participated in Election Days. Uh, agree that it'd be great to have staff in place on Election Days. And I'm a little concerned with what's gonna happen with Election Day this particular year. Um, you know, voting rights and some of the, um, challenges we've faced across the country. I'm, I'm concerned with not having full staff available.
Okay. So I'm hearing us decline option one and decline option four. And so up for discussion is do we do four hours pre-Thanksgiving and then the two floating holidays for religious uses only?
I guess, Madam Mayor, one thing we have to keep into account is we have a lot of citizens who are losing their jobs. So I don't, if we're gonna do floating holidays, I don't see why we need to do two, maybe do one to, so get some experience with it. And it allows attendance at a particular religious thing. But I think we need to be a little careful about the environment in which we're talking. Thanks.
Yeah. I'm also interested, just what is the leave accrual policy? So are like people generally getting what, four hours of annual leave per, I don't know, you are on a monthly schedule and not a pay period, right?
It's a pay period. Per pay period starts at four hours per pay.
Okay. So people are a base getting four hours per pay period? And then it can increase to like, what, up to eight hours per pay period based on tenure or something like that? Okay. Yeah. I think I tend to lean towards number two and maybe deferring on three and four for the time being.
Would, would it be possible for next week to just get information on what Alexandria and Fairfax do? Just to, in addition to Arlington?
The schools or the local government?
Local government.
Certainly.
Just so that we can sort of benchmark. Um, would it be also useful to see what the schools do? I guess the schools is kind of difficult to compare to the general government though, because I guess they have a.
There's some nine-month employees and 12-month employees.
Yeah. So maybe like it would be the 12-month employees? Okay. So, yeah, yeah. So in addition to that, if we could see what the 12-month employees have. And I think then that would be easier to make the decisions. But I'm either leaning towards what Erin proposed or possibly one floating holiday.
Yeah. Is that enough guidance before next week? And if some of that information were available before the Monday meeting, I think circulating over email would let us have a chance to noodle it.
Definitely. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
One more thing, and that is, and I think when Laura was on the school board, the school board does a two-year calendar also. So that might be something to consider in the future if you have a two-year look ahead. That would really help people plan.
That would be good.
Great. Good idea. Okay. I have a whole bunch of opioid settlements is the next item.
I think we had, uh, we were, did we have a solid waste discussion before we got to the consent?
Yes, we did.
So we can keep this very short. Um, uh, the council adopted a range of solid waste fees. Um, we intuited, we, we thought we heard from the city council that there was a preference for the hundred-dollar gap between the 35 gallon and the 65 gallon. And so we're, uh, wanted to have some additional assessment by the city attorney. We'd like the city attorney just to provide you with her views on that. And then reaffirm that, that can, uh, that can. And then uh reaffirm that that can uh, that consensus so we can prepare the documents um, in the way the council expects for the eighth.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Shields. The the question that was posed was whether um, a hundred dollar differential was defensible between the sixty-five gallon bin and the thirty-five gallon bin. And um, uh, under law, the fee structure can uh, be differentiated based on either the cost to the city of providing the service, which in this case, the cost difference between those two sizes is negligible. But it can also be based on the particularized benefit of the service being received by the user. And so um, I, you know, with the the bin sizes being roughly, you know, one being roughly double the other, um, a fee structure that mirrors that would be defensible in my opinion. So um, that's where we landed and the advice I gave and I, um, so yeah, certainly the hundred dollars would fall within that's without, within that boundary.
Any thoughts for that? I don't know if we've received, I actually got a public comment that I sent to the clerk. I don't think it's been sent to all of council, but at least I got two comments where people actually did not like the separation between the two. So I don't know if that's representative, but they found me over Labor Day weekend and wanted to really talk to me about it.
I think Madam Mayor, too, there was um, a question about, a lot of questions about composting. People haven't done it before. Do I mix? What do I mix? So part of the rollout of this, if it if it's approved, there's a lot of education about that. Um, the second area of of question is how fast, if you have a sixty-five gallon containers, how fast can you go to the thirty-five and save money? So that's another question. And then finally, for me to vote for, I'll need at least um, a six months, if not a one year review of how it's going so that, and I mean, not just the how review, but really take a long look, is it achieving our objectives? The other thing I would like us to pursue is how are we encouraging multifamily buildings to engage in similar practices, throwing less and composting? I don't think we can order that or mandate it, but I hope it's something we can encourage. But the review is something that's really important to me. I think we have to be able to tell people, look, this is new. There are some complexities here and we're willing to take a look at it if it's not working or things need to be fine tuned. So that would be a request I'd make.
Yeah, I echo that request. In general, as we adopt things, we should be in the habit of going back and saying, did it accomplish what we thought it did? If not, we should edit and revise. So I support a reasonable timeframe to go back and assess whether it met the policy objectives that we set out. And I think also grant the multifamily composting. If half of our housing stock is multifamily, like this is a really good start, but we should get serious about how to get the other half of the population shifting their behavior that way too, even if we can't compel them.
I just had one, not related to the fee, but I agree with the hundred dollar differential. Um, but I I just didn't know if Mr. Young had an update on any of the further thoughts about some of the HOAs or buildings that had concerns about how some of like the bin sharing would work or how they would accommodate a um, third bin if, you know, if you had been able to have further conversations or sort of um, troubleshooting or problem solving around that issue.
So so what what staff's talked about around along that is, you know, we've come up with a list of of all of the town home communities that are customers of 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 the solid waste program and are and are building a contact list of, you know, you know, uh, with Sandy's help in the front office and Cindy and Celestia Veronica and some other folks, we've been able to kind of put together a contact list. And so the the idea is, you know, we're gonna have kind of a broad communication out to the whole, all three thousand one hundred and seven customers, but intend to do some targeted communication and engagement with each of those town home communities to hone in on on, make sure we get a, the right answer that that's gonna work for them. So um, we haven't started any of that yet. We wanna kind of get through, I think, next week. But um, but that would be part of what we would work on this fall.
And then I know that you um, had said from the company that they did, that they wanted to make sure that people had bins. To the extent that someone puts out something that is not in the bin, is your understanding that it will get picked up or no? Like yard, you know, yard waste, that's.
I'm sorry?
Like you're, you know, yard waste or composting that isn't necessarily in the thirty-five gallon bin or like before they have a thirty-five gallon bin, if someone were to put out something that wasn't in the bin, would it get picked up, you know, just like the yard waste is getting picked up in the paper bags right now or is the new service only like stopping based on yellow or whatever color bins they see?
So I don't I don't have an answer to to share with you tonight on that. So I think, you know, the practices we've got in place for yard waste with the stickers would continue. Trying to hone in on like whatever container anybody wants to put out there that somebody's gotta figure out as compost and to pick that up. I don't think that'll work.
Well, I mean, I'm just wondering because if the like, if if the yard waste and the compost is now co-mingled, like you could conceivably have someone putting compost in the brown paper bag with the sticker, right? Along with whatever clippings there are. That's that's what I'm trying to like get at. Like, does it necessarily require waiting for the service or for their bin rollout? And I mean, you know, they're gonna have to decide like, when is it coming and how long do they have the, wanna have their yard waste out there with the potential for food in a bag as opposed to a secure bin, right? But like, just in terms of when, people are obviously, they're gonna ask like questions about co-mingling. I don't have a bin yet. I put out brown paper bag. Should I put my compost in my bag? Like, I'm just trying to anticipate these sorts of logistics.
I hadn't contemplated compost in the brown paper bag, so we'll work on a a Q and A to deal with that. I don't, I don't think that's something we want to encourage, right? Um, I think the intent is composting starts when the bins are delivered. And we're talking through kind of the timing of that based on kind of the feedback we got from you all and have, I think, some updates when we come back and talk to y'all next week. But um, so if it's a timing question on when we start, I think we can be clear on that and figure that out. Um, you know, beyond that, as far as kind of what would the vendor be willing to pick up, I don't have anything new to share.
Nice question. I think it would be great actually to have, there was an FAQ that we got early on in the, sometime this summer, answering some of the questions that we had. But it would be good to add on to that some of the questions that we've heard from community members. The one, there was one from Jeannie Thackeray today or this weekend about how does this work? I have my old little bin, just all those kinds of questions that people will have that they had, because they, you know.
Yeah.
It's the day to day, like, how's this gonna work? Can I put my bones in? I don't know.
Those, I think those emails are a great source of input for what our Q and A ought to look like. So yes, I, folks should continue to send those.
I'm gonna continue to update the FAQs, so.
Yep.
Okay.
Mayor Hardy, so the the two people that complained, said they didn't want those differentiated. Am I right to assume that those, they are either bigger families or bigger houses that produce more trash? No.
Two different ones.
Okay.
One had a family of three kids, one no kids. But they were like, it just seems like it should be tied to the actual costs. I don't know whether it's representative because
Right.
You know, one wrote me an email and then one found me at Labor Day.
Yeah, I mean, I I like the differentiation because, you know, not, I'm just, these are all assumptions, but you're assuming that um, the the bigger houses are gonna get the bigger tax relief. They probably want the bigger trash bin, which would be more than the smaller houses that don't have as much tax relief. And you know, so to me, it may, it it does make sense. Um, I would like to ask, uh, Mr. Shields, when when we, when these, if this all is approved and it goes through and the bills are sent out, are we gonna have some sort of informative insert in there to explain what, you know, what's happening?
So um, has that been part of the communications plan in the actual property tax bill?
I believe so, yes.
It's a, it's a good idea. It's a great opportunity to communicate with all of the property owners.
Right.
So uh, if if it hasn't been part of the team's discussion yet, we will certainly.
Okay, that's what I was, yeah, no, that's what I was hoping we were gonna do. And um, you know, one of the things I know we talked about, uh, Mayor Hardy and I were talking about, um, the fact that uh, I forget which conversation this was, but that our seniors don't seem to, um, we're not having the seniors take advantage of tax relief at the same um, rate as like other jurisdictions, which is interesting because we're a higher priced area. So it might also be good to include in that information, you know, if this, just to point out those services again, like if this puts you, if you are cost burdened, et cetera, et cetera, here's a, here's the phone number to, you know, the human services office or something like that. So it's sort of like a double, like, you know, also making sure people know that there is tax relief for seniors. And you know, you all can figure out how to word it, but I think just to put that out there would be good. Thank you.
So then I'm fair to the public comment. I'm just gonna read it really quickly so that you all have it. It should be in your inboxes, but I don't think the clerk has forwarded. Uh, basically, my stance is that if we're moving to this new way of paying for garbage service to make it more fair, then we should have the cost of the size of the bins be related to the cost and not mix that with some kind of reduced trash incentive. In addition to being unfair, it will tempt people to do things like put non-recyclable items in their recycled bin when their trash bin is overflowing because they picked the smaller bin to save a few bucks. So I think that was that gaming concern that I think we had heard from the task force. Um, so that was the sentiment behind that.
Okay, so um, this has been helpful. Um, and we will plan to prepare the documents, however, with the hundred dollar separation between the thirty-five gallon and the sixty-five gallon. There'll be some other updates in the staff report uh, that we hope will be responsive to some of the questions we've been getting.
Just one, please.
Um, we, now we, uh, maybe just one thought, we can also then write into the ordinance, which we often do. Uh, and the city manager is hereby also directed that, you know, within six months to provide an update on uh, on the rollout and sort of the numbers, you know. But we can get the wording right, but uh, put that clause in. Is there agreement on that as well?
Yep, yep. I think the the timeframe we ought to, that I would offer to consider is probably um, after FY twenty seven. So right, so like where we would have good data on how things have performed would after things are in service for a full year. So we'll, we'll, we'll craft something up to explain it, but.
It will have to be an annual discussion of it anyway because you're setting the fees based on
Correct.
actual costs and what people choose. So I think you're baking in an annual review of it because it has to be defended as a fee for your budget, just like stormwater and everything else.
That's a good point.
I mean, you're gonna wanna see something next June to make it, you know, before then to make a decision on what to charge for FY twenty seven fees, to the extent we have any data on that.
I think FY twenty seven fees we'll talk about in April with the budget.
Yeah, that's what I'm, that's what I mean. Like, we're gonna be discussing before.
With all the compost, will be
From a full year.
Compost bins people have had for a month. So I, that that's where I was just cautioning on how quick we're gonna have data that I think gets to Councilmember Snyder's questions.
I'm sorry, you're suggesting April then would be the timeframe?
I think probably April of the following year would be.
That's too long. I'm sorry. It's gotta be, at least, it's gotta be within a year. I mean, this is, this is, this is a lot of change, believe me.
I I think my point is that with this upcoming April, the change won't all be done. So being able to evaluate how it's performed, I don't think we'll have a clear picture because we won't even be finished by then.
Right, because you can't get all the bins out, right?
We're working on that, but yeah.
But generally, like, everything needs to be in place before you can figure it out.
A good compromise maybe when we talk about this coming April twenty twenty six is to see how the first, you know, seven months went, right? Like, how do people, like, what are the FAQs that are coming up? What's still unresolved? We won't have performance data because we won't be done with the rollout. That will need to wait the full year, as I think you were saying, Andy. But I think council will wanna be updated along the way, so we just don't wanna wait a full year. So I think the April one was more of a pulse check as opposed to a full review of how the program went.
I think tied to the, the, as Debbie was suggesting, tying it into the budget, process when we would set the fee. Here's all the logic of what's behind that and how it's, you know, perform. I think that's a, that's a great place to put it, right?
I have a
Let me write, sorry, go ahead. I was just gonna say that that's gonna, I mean, I don't remember when you had the different dates again. I think you were saying October for people declaring bin size for next year. But just thinking about, you know, when you're gonna need certain information each year, given that the fee's gonna be an April, May finalization you're going forward, right?
This is some of, you know, Wyatt kind of alluded to, we'll have some updates in the staff report. So the the timing of some of these things and the the rollout and we'll, we'll have some updates to share with you. The team's been working on 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 that. And so um, the the fee is dependent on how many people change bins. And so, you know, um, so you kind of need to figure out how many people are changing bins before you set the fee, which then you're not, people don't know what the fee's gonna be, but when they notice what, it's it's a little tricky, right?
So I'm saying, I, yeah, I I take that you're, you're figuring this out in the calendar. And by the time this comes back to us in April, we should know who's adjusting bin size because we need that information to be able to set the fee for fiscal year twenty seven regardless.
Yep.
So there's never a brief discussion about solid waste. You jinxed us, Wyatt.
Uh, next, next Monday will be really brief, I'm sure.
Sorry, Debbie had one, one final thing.
It's on the education communication point about, you know, showing people how to do this. It's the same, if you remember going back to recycling, when you have to put out the pictures of like, can't do this, can do that. And it took years for people to get it and some people still don't necessarily understand it. But I mean, putting out something that's visual like that and a reminder that if you don't do it properly, it messes it all, it messes up the whole stream for everything. So it's important to pay attention to what you're putting in which bin. And um, but I do think it's gonna take time because I know it took a lot of time for people to get on, uh, on board with recycling and understand it, so. Yeah, still put the plastic bags in there.
Yep, good point. Okay. So previewing the consent, we had opioid settlements, Aurora House agreements.
So there are three items on consent. Um, and uh, the opioid one, I think, is listed on the agenda first. Do you wanna just speak to that, City Attorney?
Sure, thank you. Um, I think you've seen these come before you before. Um, the, there are two settlements that in order to participate in, we have to submit station um, prior to September thirtieth and October eighth respectively. Um, one settlement is with eight opioid manufacturers. Um, and the total settlement across the nation is seven hundred and twenty million among those eight, then to be divided over the fifty states and then to be divided more locally. And then there's uh, the second settlement with the settlement with the um, Sackler family is before you. Um, the Purdue Pharma, uh, the pharmaceutical company settlement, we um, are not participating in because there was a window of opportunity some time ago to sign a participation form. And I'll have to speak offline about that if we have questions about that. But what is on the table is participating in the direct settlement with the Sackler family. I don't have the settlement number on that, but our deadline is September thirtieth to participate and receive funds from the Commonwealth. The the deadline that I talked about for Purdue Pharma was like, it was a long time ago. And um, I can pull that date up if you, if you'd like, but it's, uh, I feel like it was a couple of years ago. Hmm, okay.
Okay, any questions on that? Aurora House.
So Aurora House, we have uh, um, just to kind of orient everybody, we have kind of the big operating agreement between the city and Arlington County. This, these are a set of smaller agreements that um, address how the city is reimbursed uh, when we provide services for children who refer to us through the uh, when we provide services for children who refer to us through the, uh, Children's Services Act. And, uh, starting about five years ago, we opened up our doors to take children through CSA from Fairfax County and Alexandria. Arlington is another agreement that has not yet gotten to us yet, and so probably in a month or so, we're going to ask you to approve that one as well. It has some minor tweaks to what is, uh, happening right now and the fee is adjusted, uh, regularly so that we're covering our costs. I'd be happy to answer any questions on that.
So the, um, the fee increase is addressed annually or this three point five percent increase stays for the duration of the agreement?
So we will be updating these more frequently. There's some, some of the different, the different jurisdictions have different terms to those agreements.
One's four years and one's two years and...
Right.
But there's an opportunity, because I'm just thinking about CPI, tying it to that or, you know, approximating that to ensure that we're covering our costs and three point five over four years doesn't seem like that would...
Right.
So I just want to make sure that we're considering that on an annual basis to ensure covering our costs. That's the first request. And then the second one is, I'm sure, just education on my part, but I'm looking at the residential rate calculation and the average, um, I assume this is our, yeah, our actual and our budget number. So we're spending roughly one point two million dollars a year on the Aurora House. And then the next page says we are anticipating three hundred thousand dollars in revenue from the Child Services Act. So the bound, the delta between that, that nine hundred and some thousand dollars is operating costs that we are absorbing?
No, that, that's the, kind of the, the big agreement is with Arlington County and that's where the majority of replacements come from. Now, to the extent that there are false church, uh, girls at Aurora House, then we're paying the full cost for those.
Sure.
Um, the, uh, but Arlington County is paying the full co, cost for, uh, their placements.
I had the same question. I just want to make sure that the one point three million is cost neutral to the city other than the girls at ours.
As a general rule, that's the construct, yes.
So is there an additional, is this Children's Services Act, um, under, this is under the fiscal impact section that I was reading it, there's an additional anticipated, um, revenue from...
Arlington.
Arlington, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, and that's kind of the core...
We're anticipating that to be...
Operating that we've had since nineteen ninety-five, since the facility was open.
Million-ish.
Yeah.
We haven't had a long track record of that many of our own residents there.
That's right, and kind of the history on it, I'm sorry, I'm interrupting you.
Okay, so the answer is rough, is that Arlington is not represented in that anticipated revenue and the fiscal impact?
That's right. So the history on this is that referrals from Arlington County, from court referrals, was declining. And so it really kind of questioned, you know, like, can this program survive? And there were, we recognized that there was a universe of other needs of residential care that were needed. And so that's what, in working with the Aurora House Advisory Board, um, and with Arlington County staff, we opened Aurora House to, um, take, uh, youth from Fairfax and Alexandria. So that's, that's kind of the ratio, three hundred thousand is still a minority part of the overall picture of what's happening at Aurora House, but it is a service that we're now providing and these agreements lay out how we're reimbursed for it.
Great, thank you for answering that question. Darren has a question.
I just had a similar question to Debbie and I think it, it might be in the letters themselves where it said the cost or the change in fee was something like ten percent, but we've reduced it down to three point five percent. And so I guess I, I just, since it is, right, the multi-year agreement, want to make sure that there isn't an issue, yeah, it's in, it's in these letters, that there isn't an issue over time, right? Our calculations recommend an increase of ten percent. We would like to propose a three point five percent increase for the rate of three fifty-two. So just understanding that...
That delta.
A little bit better, I think would make sense.
Let me follow up on that.
Thanks.
So this one, um, we're asking, uh, the city council approved a contract with CWG several years ago with an annual cap of three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. We anticipate this year that will, uh, we will use CWG for about four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of computer equipment and peripherals, and so we're asking for an increase for this fiscal year. Uh, we're in the last year of the agreement that we're riding with Fairfax County, so we think we're probably going to be coming back to council for a new contract authorization after this fiscal year.
I think we're good. That was it on consent, right?
That's it.
Especially given, some people had a very long day.
We also, and we have asked the council anyway, right? Yeah.
All right. Okay, any final things?
Uh, just, I guess, I don't know, part of council requests, sorry, I can save it for next week. Uh, we did get the message from Jared a few weeks ago about his, um, kid nearly being hit on Annandale Road. And something that I'd like to put in council requests is if there's, is there something, like in terms of temporary speed bumps? I know Letty sent a, a message, but is there something, um, if we could put in a request to DPW, are there temporary measures that could be put in place on some of these roads that, um, have high NTC priority?
Maybe, I see you're pulling, I, what I do know is the engineering staff are working right, working that case right now. And so I anticipate that we're going to have a response back to the community very soon.
Great.
Um, so if I could ask just for a little bit more time as that evaluation is being done. I know this has been going on for some time, but, um, it does have our attention and I, I think we'll have some solutions.
Great, thank you.
We have noticed pretty regular police presence. I think the community's noticed it, too. But even when the police can't be there, if we could just park a cop there, because now that they actually don't know whether there's someone in real life in there, that could be a deterrent. Well, I know, we do that elsewhere. Like, we do park cop cars elsewhere, at CVS, at places where we might worry about crime. So I do think that if we don't have space at City Hall, it's a good place to deploy them out in the streets. It's a little extra work for officers to have to get the cars there, but I think it does a decent deterrent. So, thank you. Okay, we'll see you all again, eight-thirty tomorrow. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.